We are live.
Okay, after all that, I need a minute to pull up my proper. Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the July 8th meeting of the Highland Park Planning. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger, Home News Tribune, and the Highland Park Planet on January 29th, 2021. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on July 6th, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board, Borough Hall. And has remained posted as required by law. I'm also just gonna remind everyone to speak, lean into your microphone so everyone can hear you. And also, if for some reason you do step away from the meeting, meaning that you're actually leaving us, please let Jen know. So Jen, with that, roll call, please.
Ms. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Brescher?
Here.
Ms. Hat Hazy?
Here.
Mr. Hale? Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Kluger?
Here.
Mr. Lannaris? Mr. Malay?
Here.
Mr. Nolan?
I'm here.
Mr. Pearlman?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Constantine?
Here.
And Mr. Katch?
Here.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. So our, I just wanna give a quick note about, well, two things. One is we, there are storms in the area, various areas where people are zooming in from. So if for some reason we, I guess, lose connection of a, you know, that would form a quorum for the Board, we'll have to sort of figure that, that point out. But if you lose, if a Board member or consultant loses contact, please just let Jen know that via text once that, when that happens. The other thing is, we have several items on our agenda this evening, and we also have, one of the things is a hearing of a new case for an applicant that's actually already had to wait out a couple meetings due to other issues that were before them. And so we have about three consistency review and then two resolutions. So I'm hoping that we can get through that work in maybe about a half an hour, and then we would jump into the, the hearing of the new case. So the first action or business would be the consistency review for the cannabis ordinance. That's something that typically our council liaison, Matt Hale, would be introducing to us and giving us a little bit of background. But Matt was called away on an urgent family matter. So I know the ordinance was distributed to the Board. I hope everyone had a chance to review that. I think, Roger, you can jump in at any time, but basically, our job is to look at it only in terms of it aligning with our zoning and our master plan. So it's a more, you know, just a more specific part of the entire ordinance that, that we're looking at. And we're looking at it in terms of, I guess, as a retail business, you know, where do you put that type of business? We're saying that we put that in our central business district in the CBD. For example, not in, you know, a residential garage, and that we're, and that, that's what we're basically the way in which we're looking at this. But Roger, if you want to give us any other.
Yeah, the, the, you're basically being asked to do a consistency review pursuant to Section 26 of the Municipal Land Use Law. This, this ordinance has been introduced at first reading by the council at some point, I think it was, I thought Jen said last week, but whenever it was introduced, it was, and it's now been referred to you as is required because it is a land use regulation. Your, your job, so to speak, is to determine whether or not it is, and I'll use it in the posit, it is with the master plan. The language of the statute is a little stilted. I don't like it, but it technically says, "You must find that is not inconsistent with the master plan." But, but in reality, you're just doing a consistency review to determine whether or not what is being done in this ordinance is consistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan. There was a question that was raised to me as to what other towns have done. I've had any number of towns whereby they have decided to ban the distribution of cannabis because they have felt that right now, there's not a lot of information about it. They feel a little uncomfortable as to the lack of regulations, which have been promulgated at this point in time, and they are sort of in a waiting state. This town has taken a slightly different approach, which you have every right to do. The reason why this ordinance is necessary, quite frankly, is because the statute, which was formulated as a result of the 19, or strike that, the 2019 referendum, which was approved by the voters in the state of New Jersey to allow for recreational cannabis throughout the state. The statute was ultimately approved on February the 22nd, I believe it was, of 2021. And it indicated, among other things, that there are certain classes of activity that are listed in the ordinance itself. And if you do not do something within the first six months of the adoption of the statute, then all of these, these classes of activities will then be permitted within your municipality for a period of five years, and you cannot change that during that five-year period. You have the right to say, "That's okay." You have the right to say, "No, we don't want that." And you have the right to do what, what Highland Park has done, which is sort of an interim. You also have the right during that five-year period to say, "We've looked at this further." You can't take back what you've done, but if, if for some reason you decide as a community that you'd like to add a different class, you have the right to do that. You are not required, but you do have the right to do that. So that's why this ordinance is important, because you're coming up to the, the deadline, and if you don't do something, then all of the provisions of the statute will apply to Highland Park. The only thing that you cannot prohibit is the sale, if you will, to an individual of cannabis to the home. In other words, if the Roger Thomas Distribution Center located in Allen Lucci, New Jersey, delivers some pot to Kim Hammond, that can't be, that can't be prohibited. But for example, if, if Jeffrey Pearlman decided that he wanted to end up having a delivery service out of his home in Highland Park, that would be prohibited. So anyway, that's really kind of the background of what's going on.
Okay, so does any of the Board have any comments or questions that I guess would maybe be for Roger at this time? Or each other? Steve?
So this is, I think I know the answer to this, but am I correct in assuming or understanding that those uses that we're saying would be allowed or would not be allowed are not permitted in any other zone? It's only the C commercial and the CBD?
Yes.
That's my understanding. What ordinance says, yes.
Okay.
So that means that for the next five years, that's where they will be allowed. And if the, if the Borough chooses to do nothing else, that's the only place that'll be allowed.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, Jeff, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, just a, yeah, just a quick question, and maybe just for my own edification. Roger, do you happen to have, or consent to the Board at some point, just some of the background on the different class of, you know, of cannabis, or their sale, there's distribution, there's cultivation, like, there's a bunch of different things.
So that's listed, yeah, they're just, they're listed in the ordinance, so it's, it's mandatory.
Right. I mean, I, just a little more of the legislative history at some point. Just, just, just for, you know, I don't think it's not, it's not relevant for tonight's discussion.
Well, is it relevant? Yeah, is it relevant in terms of our decision in terms of consistency? Okay, so let's table it for a future conversation then?
Yeah.
Is it a quick question?
Yeah, just asking if there was resources to send.
But do is probably, in the next couple of days, I'll dig out relevant portions, the best thing that you can look at in terms of the legislative history there.
Thanks.
Uh, it looks like Alan Kluger has his hand up.
Yeah, I don't have any issues regarding the consistency, but just a, maybe a question back to council in terms of whether they had considered or would consider any limitations on any of these cannabis-related uses or stores being within a certain distance from any religious uses, educational uses, non-for-profit uses, community centers. I'm not saying I'm in, definitely in favor of some of that kind of limitation, but would like to know whether they had considered it or is it something that they would consider?
So, so I'm not gonna give an official answer, because I, I don't want to speak for, for the council. But I asked a similar question. And my understanding is, I think that the simple way to answer it is that they used our guidelines for, for retail alcohol sales as their guidance. So in other words, we allow it in the CBD. You know, they limited by it has to be licensed, it, you know, there's different hours that would be allowed on that type of business than on other businesses. But in terms of location, that, that they, that they felt that they couldn't limit it, you know, by proximity to something else. And I think primarily because we're such a small town, like, I don't, I don't know what circle you could draw and not, and not sort of eliminate everything. So they use, you know, the sale of, retail sales of alcohol as, as something to, to use as the guide for a lot of this. It looks like Kalidra has her hand up. No, you're muted, so if, if you're speaking, unmute yourself.
Sorry, I was having a hard time unmuting myself there. So just because there are different ways that people use cannabis and different, like, there are different products that are produced as a result of it. I know that a lot of people use cannabis in cooking or baking, create products in that way. Does the, would, would the, does the ordinance, and I understand that for the distribution, we're looking at the central business district, but does the ordinance have room for, or would the council consider room for entrepreneurs that wanted to start a home-based business that was creating products, like food products, using cannabis? How does that fit in with this?
So Roger, you might be best suited to speak to that.
Just upon this ordinance, it doesn't. So there's been, presumably, and again, I privy to what the discussion was at the council level that are available, and they chose to only limit it to the two that they've made reference to, and only in the locations that they've made reference, and they've made a policy decision that home-based production and/or distribution is not appropriate.
So is Roger breaking up for everyone, or is it my wifi that is so, okay, all right?
Everyone.
I only heard like every fourth thing that Roger said. I'm so sorry, Roger. I couldn't really hear you.
It looks like he's frozen.
It looks like, maybe that I you know what, I'm gonna.
If you kill your, your, your video, we might get better audio, although that's not always the case. But basically, what Roger did say, just to catch up while he does that, is that the, what are, what the ordinance is providing for is not any home-based businesses. It's, it's retail locations that are on, you know, in our CBD and like, commercial spaces. Roger, can you hear us?
Uh, I can, but I don't know, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that seems a lot better also. Okay.
Oh, okay, then I'll, I'll leave it that way.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions or from the Board? Okay. So we do have to open this up to public comments. I think we will do that at this time. The public is invited to, Jen, what are they gonna do? Raise their hand, and if they're, you'll, you'll call them by their name and order. Once they're called, people have to give their name and address for the record. And I'm also just gonna ask that, Jen, once you see who's, how many hands are up? If you give me a sense of how many people, if there's anyone at all, just so we know how to kind of manage our time here a little bit. Do we have any hands up, Jen?
Right now, we only have one.
One. Okay, so I'm still gonna ask people to limit comments to under three minutes, but and again, we're just talking about the, the matter that is before us, the consistency review on the cannabis ordinance. So Jen, why don't you bring that person into the meeting?
First one is Dan Stern Cardinal.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Dan? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so just give us your name and address, and then Roger will swear you in.
Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street.
Mr. Cardinal, do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I'll keep it very brief. I just want to say that we, we have alcohol, retail sales, and on-site consumption in the central business district. With cannabis being legal at the state level, it seems like common sense that, that those types of businesses would all, would be consistent with everything else in the central business district. So please find that it is not inconsistent, I think is the correct wording. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public? Okay.
I have one more.
Okay.
Bootan.
Oh.
Mary?
Yeah. Oh, hi, yeah, it's Mary Bootan, 709 Madison Ave.
Miss Bootan, do you swear or confirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Uh, yes. Did the previous speaker do that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that you folks have received the June 29th communication from residents opposed to cannabis businesses in Highland Park. That was forwarded to the Chair with the request that each member of the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment receive a copy. Was that done?
Um. I don't know. Jen, so you, you sent something to, to our clerk, to Jennifer, to distribute to the Board?
I actually sent it to you, Kim.
To me?
Asking that it be forwarded to everyone?
Um, so I have to admit, I, because I have also received other emails from you, and I just assumed it was on a, maybe a personal matter. I don't, I, and I wouldn't, I would have sent it to Jennifer to distribute. But I actually don't recall, I, I could check my email, but I, I have to apologize, I don't recall getting something to distribute.
Okay, I sent it on June 29th.
But for future, yeah, so for future reference, the, the person, right, to send anything to regarding the Board would be the Board Clerk.
All right, and then earlier this evening, I did send.
At Highland Park.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim. This evening, earlier this evening, I did also send to you, to Mike Mullins, to Jennifer, to Joan, copies of a communication as a follow-up to that under the heading of inconsistencies with the master plan regarding cannabis businesses.
So that I can say, I, either you, you're using an old address or something, because that, I definitely didn't get an email from you today.
I'm using the, the, the HP Borough address that's listed.
I don't, I don't have an HP Borough address, so.
Just so you know, they, they think you do. All right, well, we'll get that straightened out.
Okay, so why don't you just then, yeah.
All right, well, the point is, we'll make sure that, you know, each of you get copies of these various communications, because this is, you know, very timely. As far as inconsistency with the master plan, there are many of us who do want to point out where we see the cannabis, proposed cannabis ordinance and the master plan and land use elements not lining up at all. For starters, the Planning Board and zoning need to recognize that any marijuana business is actually operating outside of federal regulations, including the Food and Drug Administration and Controlled Substances Act. So, you know, as residents, we certainly have a right to presume that any land use developments, et cetera, that we support would be completely in compliance with all laws. You know, officials in Highland Park can't be picking and choosing which ones they will uphold and which ones they will violate. So that's number one. You know, we have a right to expect that the master plan only endorses fully legal establishments and businesses. Secondly, there's the issue of local control, which is really important to expand upon. Something that Roger, you know, didn't happen to touch on is the fact that under S21, under this, you know, regulatory guidelines, the, any pot business that is allowed in is grandfathered. So it's not just a matter of, okay, you have five years, and then you can decide to opt out. You can opt out five years later, but anything you allowed in stays. So you just lost your local control, and any flexibility right there on future land use, redevelopment, infill, economic development decisions, Highland Park is stuck. Whatever's let in for pot stays. There's no opt-out of what's already been let in. That is very critical to understand, and that completely affects our flexibility. The other thing we want to discuss is, you know, the, the number one goal of the master plan is to preserve and enhance the character and small-town feel of the community. And again, you receive communications from over, you know, 50 residents from all over town that do not see cannabis businesses supporting that number-one goal. And there are many examples in the documents we forwarded to you of where that fails to meet the goal, where cannabis businesses fail to support that goal. In addition, there is the issue of cost to taxpayers, general mental, general health and mental health consequences, especially for children, nuisance crimes, loitering, smell of marijuana, decrease in property values, you know, these are all things that do not align very well with our overall master plan goals. Last but not least, with regard to rehabilitation, redevelopment, reinvestment, Highland Park identified itself as an entire area in need of rehabilitation, which means that anything we do, you know, can make its own, you know, can identify as its own little redevelopment plan. Well, no pot businesses are eligible for any state or local economic incentives. So again, that's a big issue of bringing in any of these industries that cannot receive any of these economic incentives. And again, many of us feel we should put our time and energy and taxpayer resources into businesses that are not as controversial, that much better align with the master plan and land use elements that give us future flexibility, that are not in.
Okay, Mary, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to start to.
Oh, sure.
Since we're at the four-minute, and, and I do think that you hit on some master plan, and now maybe you are sort of veering into areas that are actually outside our purview, so. But I thank you for your comments. Jen, do we have anybody else from the public?
Um, we have Dan Stern Cardinal again.
Okay. And I guess in a quick effort.
Well, we have Rita Polos, too.
Okay, so let's do, let's do Rita first, since we, that's someone we haven't heard from.
Okay.
Ms., is, oh, there you go, okay. Ms. Polos, do you swear or confirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Rita Polos. I live at 48 Skyview Terrace.
Thank you.
So I, I would just like to say, um, I'm opposed to the cannabis business. I'm not gonna give you a whole lot of legal, you know, reasons why, but I will tell you that I do know that there's 40 towns that opted out, and they did that for a reason. I mean, I know as a mother and as a resident, as someone who loves this town, very, very eager to hopefully have our downtown be lively and bright and electric and, you know, bustling with people and businesses thriving, and I just don't see that with cannabis. I do know, if you look at Massachusetts, and I've seen documentaries, I know people that live there. There was a great town there in Revere. They have a cannabis place. It brings people, that loiter. I mean, yes, there's a lot of people that are using it for medical reasons or just recreational, but you have to look outside of the box and know that there are gonna be people who are gonna buy it, provide it to younger people. There's people who are gonna buy it, they're gonna go in their car, they're gonna roll a joint, they're gonna smoke it, throw the butt out the window, possibly the wrappers, and then drive out of our community and possibly hit someone. So you really have to look at all the, the other aspects of it. There's the, the nice part, that people are gonna use it to bake and, and do some things, but then there's also that other part. I go to Quick Check, I see people all the time buying cigarettes for underage kids. So you really have to know what it is. It is a drug, and in the wrong hands, it could be very dangerous. I just don't know if that's what we want to do right now, especially when we're trying to work so hard to revitalize our downtown. So I, I just want you to hold on to that. I don't think that the money we're gonna get, which is, is not a huge amount from a cannabis business, is going to be able to offset all the other negatives that might come of it. So with all the other towns saying it, not to mention the fact that I don't want to hear the jokes anymore that we're high land park, and this is where you're gonna come and get high. So just, you know, take this into consideration. Um, I, you're all very intelligent people, and you all live here and love this town, as I do, and I know that you're gonna make the right decision, but I think right now, um, I think it's just way too soon to see what the effects of these types of industries are gonna have in our town. And that's all I'd like to say.
Okay, thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Um, Jen, is there anyone else at this time?
Uh, we still have Dan's hand up.
Okay, so I, I guess, Dan, if you can keep it to 30 seconds, we'll give you a second shot, but I would like to turn the meeting back to the Board, so, um.
I will be very quick.
Okay.
Uh, do I need to say my name and address again?
Yes, please.
Okay, Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street.
Okay, yes.
Okay, um, so I just want to correct the record on some things. I know this is beyond the scope of a consistency review, but if you're gonna make determinations based on, like, data, you should use, like, the appropriate data to guide public policy. What the data show with cannabis is that there's no association with an increase in traffic problems. There's a weak negative association with underage use, and that becomes a stronger negative association as you get years removed from legalization. There is a weak negative association between the presence of retail businesses and crime in that neighborhood, and there is a weak positive correlation between the presence of retail businesses and property values in a neighborhood. Those are the data based on reviews of anywhere from a handful to over 60 studies. If you're going to use those types of things to make your determination, you should at least have the correct data. Math is real. Follow the data. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, do we have anybody else?
Hi. It looks like Mary Bootan again, but I'm not sure if she just didn't lower her hand.
Um, okay.
Mary?
Yeah.
Mary, you can have a 30-second rebuttal, and then we really are gonna turn it back to the Board.
Oh, thank you, Kim. Mary Bootan, 709 Madison. The only thing I wanted to just continue on was, in terms of, again, inconsistency with the master plan, which is really the purpose of this conversation, that Highland Park has a lot of goals and discussion in the master plan and land use regarding using our river road, our river access to the Raritan River, the environmental center. We promote ourselves as a sustainable community, a Silver Level certification. But the marijuana industry is absolutely horrific on the environment. And this is the time for us to, you know, walk the talk. We can't just say, "Oh, we support the environment. We want to have our environmental center."
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Okay, thank you.
You'll leave it there, Mary.
Thanks a lot. No problem.
Okay. Jen, I'm gonna assume we have no more hands?
Nope, I have another Ray. Nope, I have another Ray. Ray, board?
Okay.
I can't seem to click on him. It won't let me. Rita Polos has her hand raised again as well. Oh, there we go.
Well-
Ray?
You're muted.
Are you there, Ray?
You have to unmute. Sorry, you have to unmute.
You have to unmute yourself, Ray Borde.
I did, I did, I did.
Sir, do you swear that swear or firm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
Yeah, only the truth, where is the God? Thank you.
Uh, you have to give us your name, please, and address.
Okay. My name, Ray, uh, Borde, I'm on, um, four twenty South Second, South Second Avenue.
Would you spell your last name, please?
B O R D A Y.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, yes?
Okay, um, I would like to say about that, um, um, every decision, when, when you make a fast decisions about anything, it's not going to bring any like positive consequences. So my position is that, uh, you have to do more research and more understanding of, um, things which you're going to approve. Um, and when you do more research, um, then, you know, it's going to be more understandable for people, for residents of Highland Park, uh, how to handle it and you will understand yourself how to handle it. Um, so I, I really don't know about cannabis a lot, but I'm, I'm know, I just know that the decision which makes very fast decision, uh, it's not going to be a good one. This is my opinion. We have to think more-
Thank you.
About it. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I also, uh, Jen, are we done with hands?
Um, Rita Polos has her hands up, hand up again.
So I just, I wanted, um, just also-
No, I'm done.
To, okay, thank you. To the, to the board, which is, um, a- actually to the public, which is a reminder, the issue before this board is not whether or not, uh, to bring retail cannabis to Highland Park. That, that decision is in the hands of our elected officials, um, our, our borough council. Um, we're looking at whether or not the retail business is consistent. You know, the, uh, the type, whether the actual, um, locations of those types of businesses are consistent with the master plan. So just, there's a, I think there's a fine line there. Um, okay, so Jen, are, are, are there any more people with their hands up? Who would-
Mary Bhutan.
Hmm, I, we, we've already heard from Mary three times, twice.
Okay, what do you want me to do?
Well, that'll be up to Kim.
Oh, did we lose Kim? Looks like she's frozen.
It does look that. There, there she is.
Okay, I, I lost, I lost everybody. Okay.
Um-
My internet is unstable.
Mary, yes, so is mine. Uh, Mary has got her hand up, but again, that's the third time and I think that-
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I, I, I feel like we've given people three, four, five minutes and that, I, I think the, the, um, we're hearing what you're saying. I, we don't need to have it said, oh, you know, over and over. Um, I, I think what would be more valuable is for the board to have time with those comments right now and, and review them. So, um, Jen, is there anyone who has not been heard on this matter with a hand up?
No.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to, um, close the public portion and return the, uh, conversation to the board to, uh, to, I guess, determine whether we're ready to take up a, um, a motion or whether we want to discuss, uh, some of the issues that were raised by the public. Uh, Patrick?
Yeah, I just had a quick, uh, comment upon somebody else's comment. When they're talking about grandfathered in, that just meant the use of. It doesn't affect any redevelopment plans for a structure or a building, just like, you know, s- somebody who owns a convenience store doesn't necessarily have to remain there. It's just that the use as a convenience store is essentially established. That's all we're talking about. It won't affect any redevelopment plans down the road. I mean, you know, it would, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that point. As an issue of, let's say, consistency and local control.
Hey, Alan Kluger, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that while I, um, I feel a lot of the comments we've heard from the public, especially those that, uh, were not in favor of the cannabis ordinance are important and I don't disagree with them. However, um, I think those are issues for, uh, for council and not for us. And, and, you know, our role here tonight is consistency with the master plan. I don't know that I've heard anything specific that would change my view that, you know, as the ordinance has currently written, um, is not inconsistent with the master plan. Um, although, as I said, um, I'm not, I'm probably not in favor in general in, with the cannabis ordinance. Um, and it's unfortunate the way the state set this up, that the regulations are not even out yet and the deadline for when the regulations come out is the same day, I believe, as when towns have to either opt in or opt out. And unfortunately, towns were put in a very difficult position and I guess some towns have decided to sort of punt and wait until the regulations are out and then either opt in maybe later. Um, Highland Park could have chosen to do that. They did not, but we're not, we're not council.
Right.
I don't know that we can, we can't change anything at this point and our role is strictly a, um, because it's consistency review, um, with regard to the master plan.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands. Jennifer, no?
No.
Okay, so is there, um, I guess then my next question would be, uh, is someone prepared to make a motion regarding consistency? Patrick?
Technically, technically, the motion should be that, technically, the motion should be-
Inconsistent, yes.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's a little stilted, but should be the determination that the, um, ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. Therefore, if you're voting in favor of, uh, the motion, it would be to pass it favorably back to the, to the council. If you're voting against the motion, you would be voting against it being favorably, uh, voted back to the council.
So, okay.
I move that the, uh, the, the, uh, planning board find that the council's, uh, uh, ordinance is not inconsistent with the, uh, master plan.
Uh, do we have a second?
Okay.
Uh, seconded by Rebecca, uh, Kalidra, you have your hand up, but I think we'll just wait till the roll call at this point, since we've had a motion and a second. Is that right, Roger, to be heard? Oh.
Yeah, I was, I was absolutely trying to second because they-
Okay, sorry. Okay, it's hard to tell what's going on. You don't, because I don't have your screen. Okay. Uh, so seconded, uh, by Rebecca Hand, uh, Jen, roll call, please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Ms. Hat Hazy?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, so we are going to move on to, we have two resolutions. The first resolution is, uh, P twenty twenty-one oh four, which is the consistency review of the downtown redevelopment plan. Um, that plan was distributed more than a week ago. I know there was, um, some minor revisions made and then redistributed again today. Um, I will, um, see if, uh, anyone has any further comments or issues with it as written.
Uh, if I can, um, as you know, I received some comments from both you and from Alan. What I've done is I've taken into account, and by the way, about two weeks ago, I received comment from both Jim and from, uh, Joe Baumann, your, the boroughs, uh, I was going to say Bond Council, Redevelopment Council. Uh, those have been incorporated into the draft. And what I've done is I've taken, uh, some of the, uh, comments that were made and incorporated them and I've, uh, sent them to Jen today. Uh, that's what you have in front of you now, just so that it's clear. What I've done on page six, uh, at the end of the, uh, first incomplete paragraph is just simply added, uh, two sentences which indicate that the board members and members of the public also raised questions with regard to coordinating a plan involving pedestrian and bike paths, uh, with the redevelopment area. Uh, it was also mentioned by board members that the, uh, parking study should also include a review of safety issues regarding, uh, parking traffic and pedestrian. Excuse me. Then I also refer you to page eight. Uh, there is a reference to the fact that under, under, uh, number one, just simply edit, uh, uh, tracks A and B as originally presented, which is the, uh, just the master plan as they do enhance goals and objectives of the plan. And number three, uh, with the first bullet point was modified to read, uh, there should be, uh, allowed one or more multi-level buildings with multi-level but public plaza accessible from Raritan Avenue unless and until another, there is another location, uh, devoted to that public plaza. So tho- those are the comments. I do know that Alan had some additional ones. Um, my notes reflected somewhat different than the board on, uh, so that this is an accurate reflection of the entire, the board. That's what I have right now and Alan certainly, he, he does make a comment that I'm happy to add, which is to have the voting, uh, and he was kind enough to provide me in one of his emails, uh, what the voting was and I'm happy to add that. I didn't get a chance to do that and I'll be happy to add what the voting was in regard to each of the tracks. Uh, but he did have some other points and, and, um, I thought it would be best at this stage, Kim, to, um, either allow him to take his comments-
Sure, yep.
And then we go from there. Alan?
Okay, Kim, you want to do it that way? That's fine.
Sure, yep.
Okay, um, so I'm on page, my only comments are on page eight, uh, the last page. Um, so I think consistent with what we said in, for number one, that tracks A and B as originally presented are consistent. Um, I think that we should state in some way that for number two, with regard to track D, um, I don't know that people, you know, I don't know that we specifically said this. I did go back and listen to the, the tape that, um, track D as originally presented, what would, would have been or was not, not consistent, but at least to say that the board finds that track D as either as amended by Jim Constantine or including the, um, proposed changes of Jim Constantine is consistent with the master plan. Because I think without those changes, I don't know that the vote would have been favorable.
So Alan, what you're suggesting is just that under number two, the language just sort of more reflect that, um, track D as, as in its second formation, um, which included the following and then not, so that it doesn't look like we're just saying, hey, we're making these recommendations.
Right, because that's my-
So remove the word recommendations and say track D as, okay.
Right, because, yeah, I was going to say, also to take out the word recommendations because they weren't really recommendations, they really were conditions. And I think those were the-
You know what, Alan? If, if that's, if that's your thought process, I'm happy to, uh, change the word recommendation to conditions. That's fine.
Yeah, I think that that language is fine. I mean, if anyone, uh, takes issue with that change, why don't you raise your hand? Um, or, okay. All right, so we will accept that.
Okay, and then going down to number three, um, the first bullet point that we should be allowed one or more multi-level buildings, I, I, I don't know that that was necessarily our, the, the board's recommendation. Um, you know, I think that's something that, that Jim had mentioned or, and I don't know if that's something that Mr. Baumann wanted put in, but I think that what we really were focusing on was the fact that was the loss of public space and, and the lo- loss of a public plaza in order that would be available to continue, um, so that, you know, the public activities that, that we've had in the past and may have in the future. And I don't know that we necessarily were recommending one or more multi-level buildings.
So we, so Alan, so, so we, I'm, I'm going to make, oh, okay. I, I have a quick just wording suggestion that, that remedies that, I think. But it, in other words, I, I think what happened was it, part of Jim's new recommendation was that, um, that having more than one building, which is not stated in the original plan, might be an asset and I don't think we were against that. So instead of saying that there should be one, because I think we wouldn't care if there, like, we would be fine if there were zero buildings and a, and a multi-plaza. I think it could say there can be allowed more than one mi- multi-level building. In other words, like, we're giving permission that there could be more than one. We're not saying there must be one.
I'll defer to Jim on that because the language that I got there was, was a combination of recommendations from Jim and Joe.
Except it was our motion and our, and our sort of, yeah.
And I, I understand that. That's why I'm saying it is, it is ultimately yours.
In other words, the plan, the plan calls for a building. So to, to restate it here is sort of a little weird and redundant, right? We don't recite all the things that the plan calls for. The plan calls for a structure. What it didn't maybe specify was that we would allow more than one. So I think to say that it would be more than one, but that we, but, but that it, it must accommodate the multi-use public plaza.
If the board feels comfortable with the word can as opposed to the word should, I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
And to strike the one or more, it would just say be allowed, be allowed more than one.
Can be allowed more than one. Right, fine.
But I think the, the overriding issue that we were bringing out was that whatever is there, whether it's one building, no building, or multiple buildings, that we would want to see a public plaza, public open space.
Right.
I think that, that is the key. So I think that's what the real key, I would think of the bullet point is, not necessarily about, you know, how many buildings-
Well, right, so maybe just reverse it and say that, that the public plaza-
Does include, the, the language does include the public plaza.
Yes, it does. I think he's just saying wouldn't it have been better to say public plaza first and to accommodate that would, can also allow more than one multi-level building.
If you-
Which is, which is more consistent with what, I don't care, I'm just saying that's more consistent with what Jim had said.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, all I'm just getting to is what I think the focus was of, of our discussion and, and what we voted on.
So, is there anything else, Alan?
And then the second bullet point, what we, um, we're only focusing on the farmer's market activities. And what we don't mention is what was part of the motion was, um, that there would be, that where there will be place for, you know, to, to study and, and know what the parking requirements are for the, for the RCHP activities and other activities that are going on at the, at the, at the church and for parking for the Raritan Avenue businesses that are down at the end. So that, that wasn't mentioned at all.
Well, but Jim did, I went back and listened also. So Jim did give, uh, testimony that in the original plan that they, that it does, that they had language that said that they were going to take into consideration the parking needs of both the community center, um, and that we were basically adding, um, a- and, and, and sort of some replacement for the municipal, uh, the, you know, for downtown businesses there. But they do, they do, he, he did basically say that, so in other words, along with the parking needs outlined in the plan, consideration for neighboring businesses, i.e. municipal lot should be considered, right, would be.
Yeah, I just think if we don't have a bullet point there, it's going to get lost. And I think that was an issue that was raised by a number of members, you know, aside from myself, that, um, that the parking needs of the RCHP and the, and the constituent organizations that are there and for the Raritan Avenue businesses must be taken into account in whatever, um, changes are made in the track C plan.
Do we, do we agree that, that, that that is?
Yes.
I guess I should say, does anyone take any, um, umbrage to that, to that change that, that it would disagree with what we had agreed to? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. So-
I will add that to, uh, to bullet point number two.
Okay. Um-
I'm good.
So-
My, my version that I think went on at four had a typo in bullet point number one under paragraph two towards the top of the page reads the open space proposal to be removed from North Third to Avenue. So I don't know, maybe that's my version, if anyone else had that, I think South Third got cut off.
Sorry, Rebecca, what page are you referring to?
Uh, the same page, page A, paragraph two bullet, the first bullet point. I just want to move on from the typo.
Uh, so the two should not be there, is that it? The open space-
Uh, no, I think those-
From North Third Avenue. I think it's just- Be removed from North Third Avenue.
Right.
Uh, oh, I thought it was supposed to say North Third Avenue to South Third Avenue or it could be the first version.
I think it was just the- I think it was just supposed to be from North Third Avenue in the street main open. I think just two can be removed.
I agree.
And I just have one other sort of technical language thing on um, on page five, so the. I guess the third, second full paragraph, third paragraph down though, as a result of these concerns, it says, as a result of these concerns. Modifications to the plan were made and presented by Mr. Constantine, period. Mr. Constantine suggested that a reasonable change, blah, blah, blah. I feel like modifications to the plan weren't made. That was our issue, was that they were basically saying, oh, these are our other ideas. So I think a better sentence there would say, as a result of those concerns, comma, remove the modifications to the plans. Were made and presented by Mr. Constantine. It could just read, as a result of those concerns, comma, Mr. Constantine suggested that a reasonable change, the original plan. Might include, and then it lists those things. I think it's just clear because there is no other plan. Okay, that's all I got there. Does anybody else have anything regarding this resolution?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I I do, I and I. Yes, okay, I submitted some comments this afternoon. I was on vacations. I didn't get a chance to review this earlier, but I I actually along with that. When we were saying, you know, reasonable changes to the original plan might include a permanent space on South Third Avenue. That would mean that the plan, you know, the actual right of way would be added to the plan. And I don't know if that's something that's even feasible. In other words, can you, you, you know, the. There's already a a draft plan with parcels identified.
It says might include, it says. Yeah, so we're not saying must include.
Okay, I'm I'm just not, I just, it's just not, okay, I just doesn't sure about, without you can add it at at this point, add. Additional right of way in a draft plan, but that's, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I.
The plan, I think it's the recap of what Jim suggested. Put in the whereas section, which doesn't talk about using South Third.
Right.
So I agree with you. I'm not sure it can be added, but I don't think it did add it. I think it's just part of the recap to explain the thought process.
And so along with that is um, the next sentence, the parking structure, uh, Jim's statement that the parking structure would be for residential parking. I know that Mr. Baumann had, and there was some, I'm very frankly, I think I'm I'm a little confused that I. He seems to indicate that there were, the plan. May, that the, there will be multiple uses for the parking garage and that it would not be solely or may not even be primarily for residential parking. That that is yet to be determined. I mean, I understand, Jim, that your testimony was that that your intention is that it be that way. But that the plan is silent about. About exactly what percentage of a parking, that parking structure would be for residential versus for commuter offered parking. So I just think that, I think that that.
Well, again, this part of the plan is is basically, as you already said, Jeff, reciting what what he, what his testimony was. And then I think either the plan or the bullets to the plan do address. In other words, the the aspects of parking that are actually to to be determined.
Well, I I, but Mr. Baumann, was he, I I can't recall if he attended the last month's meeting because I certainly. He did, so and and I believe he didn't make some statements and it's not reflected in the resolution here, but he did make some statements. That were more open-ended about the use of the parking structure. So I think we just need to clarify what.
It's in there, it's in there, Jeff. If you look at page eight, paragraph, page eight, paragraph two, the third bullet point, the new parking facility. This is part of now, what are the conditions? It says the new parking facility will utilize, you know, be utilized for new residents and other needs. As determined by the borough. So it's in there.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, and that was the recommend, so I guess, I guess that I confused was that was the recommendation by the board. By the board that that was, that was, that was, we think that would be more consistent with master plan if it had other uses as determined by the borough. Or that. Or that it was, we believe that it was gonna be primarily for new residents. So I guess that's. My question about.
Well, I I don't think that there was ever, you're right, there was not a determination that, you know, levels one, two, three, and four are gonna be for residents. And five parking spaces were gonna be for shoppers, or level one was gonna be for shoppers and levels two, three, and four, or however many levels there are. Were gonna be for residents. I don't think that determination was made. Therefore, the language is is what I think is appropriate. Uh, and that's what I put down, which is that it would be used for residents and other needs as determined by the borough.
And is that was, is that, was that one of the, he says, he says that the board finds that that was consistent with the recommendations. That are already consistent with what Jim said. So I mean, and then that sounds almost redundant, right? Or it is or it isn't.
That's what the board also, I mean, my my notes reflect that that's what the board. Preferred, so that's what the board made a determin- determination of, and that's why I put it in.
I would, I would agree with that, Roger.
Yeah, I think the plan called for both tracks to have quote unquote right-sized parking, which is code for, we're not quite sure what the parking requirements will be. It will depend on what gets developed here.
Right.
Right, but I I just wanna, I I just, my recollection was Jim, Jim was providing testimony saying. This is gonna be primarily for. For residences. And then Mr. Baumann was like, well, we don't really know because of the financial calculations about making a parking garage feasible. It could be more public, let me finish my point, let me finish my point, because I'm trying to, what I'm trying to understand is exactly. What the testimony was given, what we, what I understood, Jim and Mr. Baumann were communicating to the to the planning board. And then when we made our recommendations about making it consistent, were we saying? We want, we actually do want this parking garage to be open to the public or not? And so it's like, what did we understand and I, you know, versus what we were asking for, so. You know.
My my notes reflect the fact that that what you just said was exactly what the board wanted. That it would be open in some degree, shape or form to the residences and the public.
Okay, all right, and then, all right, so that that helps me, I understand that. And then, um, so I guess. Uh, two more comments on page seven. With the sentence with regard to track D, the board felt that the final recommendation should be made. I understand I'm asking for both that, that that, you know, the board. You know, it gets being the board, but really I think it should say, you know, many members or most members of the board, not all members of the board. Believe in these.
But the motion reflects that.
Well, but this is.
Well, I I think by Roger, including the vote count, it'll make it clear what the, what the.
These are the whereas, it's not the the actual vote, but the vote is, but. I I'm asking if if the language could be added to say, both board members or majority of the board members felt, you know. Felt that the following dot, 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 and then I guess the same the sentence before the now therefore be resolved, you know, it was also strongly recommended. Uh, that the farmers market be relocated, I think, I, you know, I think there's some members do not want the farmers market relocated. So, you know, maybe. I'm, you know, look, you don't have to do this, but I I'm asking that that it that it says most members of the board recommend, strongly recommend. And or felt that.
So it's not unanimous.
And, yeah, right, exactly.
But 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 the resolutions are generally referred to in terms of, you know, what the ultimate outcome of the of the determination is. Uh, I don't think it's necessary to to be putting in the fact that, you know, there was, there was a a comment made. You know, every single comment of every of every board member, I I think.
That's not what I'm doing. Roger.
I think it's.
Isn't it really in the paragraph? You do, you do recognize that there's some disagreement, so I'm just saying.
Right, so it's so it's recognized, but but. Do you think that the, that including the vote would remedy that?
I I think, because that's the overall vote on a parcel. I think specific for this one is about the farmers market being relocated and accommodated. And uh, that's not unanimous. So I don't know why, you know, it couldn't be just, you know, worded slightly changed. So that it's, you know, most members of the board recommended the farmers market, most members of the of the board recommended the farmers market be relocated. You know.
Okay, I'm gonna jump to Collegia quickly because she's had her hand up also for quite some time and then we'll go to Steve. Collegia?
So on page seven, where the, where we talk about track C. I think the language here is not what I remember that we all agreed to in the last meeting. Specifically, the sentence that says generally the board found that the plan as presented was inconsistent unless the public. Space was enough to accommodate some of the activities and I don't recall us saying some, I thought that we were looking at. Accommodating all of the current activities and not decreasing from that.
And so I, I'm sorry. So I do wanna, I, so I do wanna jump in only because I actually did go back and listen to this part twice and took notes. Because I I did wanna make sure that we were capturing the essence of what we were saying. So we actually did say some, meaning that, in other words, we don't, we're not requiring that the farmers market be. Housed on that space anymore. So in other words, some of the types of activities, and we're not saying that everything that currently happens there, like the drive-in or the. Outdoor movie or that everything that currently happens, happens there. We want there to be enough space so that many of the things that happen. Will continue to happen there, but we're not requiring that it be a space that, you know, accommodates everything that exists right now. So we did actually say some of the activities.
Okay, so are, am I clear that when we were discussing relocating the farmers market? And maybe I'm not remembering this correctly, but I thought that we were talking about the relocation of the farmers market in its current form.
Well, I I don't think we were getting specific about the, in other words, that. I I think where we kept coming back too often was it's not for us to solve the problem, it's for us to say. We expect that if the space currently houses X, that we're not going to eliminate those things, that those things still are gonna be. If they happen in open public space, that that, you know, that we're gonna either use, require that space happen on that site or the or. Up to the council redevelopment agency's discretion to find some other location for that. So in other words. Right, the farm market could be relocated, it could be relocated in its current, I don't even know what that means, current form. I I think we were basically saying we wanted it it be, and it could, that the farmers market was to be relocated. That they couldn't dislocate the farmers market.
Steve, you had a comment?
I'm gonna go to Steve, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just just a a very quick comment about the suggestion that the whereas is include most or some or or whatever. The resolution is a resolution of the board, not not of members of the board, and the board voted and made a decision. That's the resolution. It it it's not, well, some of us feel this way and others don't feel this way. The board. Made these determinations and it doesn't matter at that point what members voted for what. So I I would be opposed to any sort of, you know, sort of feathering of the whereas is to say, well, we sort of felt like this. We we decided as a board, that was our decision.
And and my my return retort to that is that the whereas is due to reflect. They already have where there are statements by some concerns by some members of the board. It's the the their, the the therefor's are the board acted. The whereas is is a summary of the discussion. Uh, of the feelings of the board. So, you know, you're against having a couple of words being changed to reflect a little more disagreement. Which is pretty sad and I I'm asking for a couple of word sentences to be changed, just so that there's a more accurate reflection. There was a disagreement. Among members of the board. So that's it. If the board doesn't want to ma- agree with those changes, fine, I think.
I I understand, I understand what you're saying, Jeff, but my my point is is that the preamble is a statement of findings by the board. It is not, that's right, and so the board did not find, the board, the board made findings. And the board voted and the board made a decision, and that's it.
No, but in the same paragraph, with regard to track C, board members raised concerns. So it is talking about those concerns. Other, general, some, some of those.
That's because.
Some members, some members thought that the level of open space was being taken, was being substituted, not all. So what I'm saying, consistent with that paragraph, which is already saying there's some disagreement among board members in the public. To follow through with that, particularly on the farmer's. Which is a very contentious issue.
But Jeff, what I don't hear you saying, and maybe you did and I've missed it, is what, like, in other words, paragraph, what, page, what paragraph, what are you saying?
I did, I did, I did. Page seven, the last sentence before the now therefore, where it said was also strongly recommended. By ma- by a majority of board members. That's my three few words, that the farmers market be relocated. By by a majority, it's not all, just so there's, no, it's not all, that's what I'm asking.
But but that's, but that's not what happened.
Yes.
Board recommended that. The board recommended that, and when the board takes action, the entire board takes action, not individual members.
And that's now, that's where the now therefore be a result.
So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Roger to to wait in on. As our, as our legal uh, guider on this to.
I I think.
About if you have a strong feeling.
Yeah, I mean. It's it's already making reference in the beginning of that paragraph that board, that some board members, it says board members raised concerns with regard to the level of open space. You know, I I think that that kind of reflects, in my opinion, what Jeff is talking about now. Uh, I I generally don't get into, and I tend to agree with Steve, I don't get into, you know, the idea that that. You know, only, only some board members recommended this and other board members recommended that. Uh, it is a board action, it's not. Board match.
Okay, so I would.
I have a solution, would you, would you write, would say, what says level of open space? He says members raised concerns with regard to the level of open space and the relocation of the farmers market. In that sense, as opposed to it was strongly recommended.
If you want that, that would be fine.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Now, are we leaving, are we leaving that last line? It was strongly.
Fine, yes.
Because I I I don't wanna get into it, but I didn't know.
Yes, you do.
But only because the plant, I don't know that the planning board is the one that recommended the farmers market be relocated, but you know. There wasn't anything that we. I I just think that council is 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 has put, gotten that language in there to make it seem like it was us. That wants with the farmers market relocated because they wanna build on track C. And I I understand they wanna build on track C. I think that we we want, I don't know that, you know, we said anything about where we want to.
Number one, number one, Alan, I don't recall what your vote was, but my recollection, it may not have been favorable, which is okay.
That's fine, and I'm not.
But the point, the point is that, you know. I believe, and and again, it's up to the board, it's my belief that the board did recommend. Based upon after hearing what they heard from Jim, that that there, that they heard that the. The farmers market was not gonna remain on track C in its present form. That, well, let me finish, and therefore, the board recommended that the farmers market was going to be or to be relocated. And accommodated in other locations. That's what I.
I think I may realize where maybe the misunderstanding. Are you saying that? I don't know that the board said it should be moved from track C. I think we said it shouldn't be a track D anymore because we took away the public plaza. But by having this line sitting here with track C, it maybe, I think that's maybe what what some of the issues being raised here is that it's making it sound like. We as a board want it moved from track C. I think there are those on the board who may feel that. It, you know, that maybe there shouldn't be much building on track C and leave the farmers market where it is, but I think what we did say, and I agree that. It was, we should be relocated from the track D where it was intended based on the original plan. And that, and that, and that's what we did recommend is you take it off of there and find someplace else to put it. That could be South Third, it could be track C. But but I don't, we we didn't, I don't think we said it can't be a track C and shouldn't be a track C.
I think our emphasis was that if it wasn't going to be at track C, it must be relocated, it cannot be eliminated. That was our emphasis. What, we weren't interested in relocating it, we were only interested in it and not losing.
Okay, then add that to me.
My understanding is that with, with the plan that was proposed, that the farmers market as it currently exists. Cannot be located on track C, it just can't. That's what I understood, that the the general understanding of the testimony. And therefore, I think that what what was discussed earlier was that there would continue to be an open space for activities. That were taking place right now on track C and that, given the fact that the farmers market is not gonna be. Fully available for track C, it would likely have to be relocated, but could not be lost.
Could we, so so could we change that last bullet just to say something like if the farmers market cannot be housed on. Could we, so, so could we change that last bullet just to say something like, if the farmer's market cannot be housed on Track C, it must, you know, um, it, it must be relocated as per the redevelopment agreement or something. In other words, that it
Yeah, that given the importance of the farmer's market to the town, based on public input.
Where do you want that language?
I'm saying instead of, so on the, on the very, page nine, the last bullet, instead of saying that it should be explored for relocation, as if that's just sort of a random idea, linking it to, um, that if, you know, in other words, that if it cannot be housed on Track C, that then the consideration for relocation, um, has to be undertaken.
If that's, if that's what the board understands what you guys did, that's fine with me.
Can we have a show of hands as if we agree to that that being acceptable language?
That's fine.
We don't have Rebecca and I can't see, I can't see everybody's hand.
I'm having a moment over that question more as a remembrance of what we voted on. I definitely recall that the vote was that the farmer's market was to be considered. I don't remember if the vote required the farmer's market be maintained as a function, so.
I'll just, so I will, so I can tell you in my re-listening and then the notes that I took, it was just that we basically had in the motion, there were three unless issues, and one was about parking, one was about including a multi-use plaza, and the last was relocating the, uh, the farmer's market, which could, in other words, as part of the redevelopment agreement, in other words, if it wasn't going to happen there, that they couldn't just eliminate it.
So I, I don't, I don't object to having it, I do believe it was part of the spirit of the discussion, even if I can't recall for myself in this moment, if it was specified to that extent, but I do think it was part of the spirit of that vote, even though I, I didn't think the whole thing was inconsistent in the first place, but there you go.
Okay.
Therefore, with those modifications, uh, can we then, because I'm looking at the time and we have
Yeah.
Wiley and his client
Yes.
And, uh, I, you know, since they have been forced to wait, maybe we should get to them or defer any further discussion on this matter and get to Mr. Wiley and his client and then take this up later in the meeting.
Um, I, I, so again, I, um, unless anyone, I, I, I feel like we're close to a motion and I'd rather just keep the consistency of if we feel like we're prepared to make a motion to accept the, um, the resolution with the, um, comments made at this meeting, which we of course now have a record of, regarding those last bullet points and Jeff's language added to page, I think it was, uh, seven. Um, do we have?
Do we hear a motion?
Do we have?
Motion to accept.
We got a comment from Mr. Constantine.
Jim?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
I can.
I just, I just want to clean up, let me see, I'm gonna be, I'm not gonna bring up all the little minor things, but on page two, in Track D, your citation of lots includes a lot that's not included, Roger, it's block 158, lots 20 through 26, 42.
Hold on, lot 50, let's wait, hold on, let me find out where you're talking about.
Page two, tracked D, it's the third, second paragraph below the whereas, fourth line down.
Tracked D, okay, tracked D consists of block 158?
Just get rid of N 52, there is no lot 52.
Oh, thank you, got it.
I don't know, I, I have gone through this before and I thought I didn't see anything inconsistent.
Next pot comment.
Uh, the bottom of page four, where you're referring to track D, uh, the last sentence reads, excuse me, the second to last sentence.
Guys, Jim, I missed the first part of what you said.
Page, page four, last paragraph, second to last sentence, says on track D, there would be a building with multi-level residential and some commercial office on the first floor. I would recommend that be changed to on Raritan Avenue, there would be two buildings, because that's what the plan actually shows. Just minor housekeeping.
Okay.
On Raritan Avenue, there would be
On track D on Raritan Avenue.
On Rar, yes, there would be two buildings.
Isn't track, is track D? I thought that was that third and Dennison.
Yeah, we do, we have a building on the Blue Horse site and we have a building where the Bridge Restaurant, there's two.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, what else you got, Jim?
I, I have two other minor ones, but they're not substance of one other one, just go, it's, we're good.
Okay. All right, so Patrick, did you make that motion, was that you?
I did make that motion to approve the, uh, uh, memorialization as revised this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A seconded by Alan Williams, it sounds like. Uh, general call, please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Miss Hatt Hazy? Miss Hatt Hazy?
Yes. I heard yes.
Miss Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malai?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Perlman?
No.
Say that again?
No, I'm sorry guys.
I think, I think he was, he was not eligible anyway, because I think he voted no the last time.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Miss Hammond?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. So at this time, our next order of business is a hearing of, um, new, a new case, which is from Suburban Real Estate Development LLC. And, um, this application is literally in my backyard, and so I will be recusing myself, uh, from this hearing. And, uh, Alan Williams, the vice, or excuse, excuse me, Alan Kluger, Vice Chair, will be, uh, taking over his chair at this time. So, good night, good night, everybody. All right, give me a minute to get to my questions. What's that?
Other resolutions and consistency reviews.
Let's get to Mr. Wiley, well, let's do that, let's do that at the end of the meeting, please. Mr. Wiley has been very patient.
I'm just using, because Kim's leaving us.
I'm sure Kim won't mind, okay, she's gone, okay.
Alan, you're up.
I am up, okay, so we are to hear the application of Suburban Real Estate Development LLC, 238 Cleveland Avenue, block 169, lots 33 to 30, 31 to 33, for preliminary and final major subdivision. Who will be representing, all right, Mr. Wiley?
John Wiley, uh, from Wiley Lavender, is appearing on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, we have, uh, three witnesses. Uh, we have Mr. Lane from Menlo Engineering, who will be testifying with regard to the engineering issues. We have, uh, the developer, Ryan Josell, who will be testifying about, in general, about the materials, uh, to be used, uh, you know, in the construction of the seven single-family homes that are being proposed. And he was also touched upon the green features that'll be contained within these houses. Uh, and lastly, we have Justin Ocella, uh, in the event that we have, uh, some testimony as a result of perhaps some modifications, um, that will require some planning justification. Uh, so again, this is an application in which we, uh, are proposing seven lots. They all conform to the bulk requirements. Mr. Constantine has suggested a, uh, possible better design if variances are granted. Maybe we'll have Mr. Constantine visit that issue after we have some preliminary introduction as to the overall proposal. So at this point, I would like to have Mr. Lane sworn in, uh, to provide testimony as to the engineering aspects of the application.
All right, Mr. Wiley, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Wiley, okay, unfortunately, my, my internet seems to be unstable, so I was having some difficulty. But I believe what you want is to have Mr. Lane sworn in and he is your engineer, am I correct about that?
That is absolutely correct.
I'm gonna take that as a yes, so I'm gonna move forward. I'm, Mr. Can you hear me? Um, Mr. Lane, do you swear the testimony that the, you're about to give will be the key to help you, God?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lane, uh, what licenses do you possess with the state of New Jersey?
I'm a professional engineer in state New Jersey.
And you have provided testimony to the Highland Park, uh, planning board, uh, on a number of occasions and have qualified as a, uh, engineering, civil engineering, uh, expert, uh, and nothing has happened to your licenses since the last time you testified?
Correct, yes, I testified in Highland Park and probably 80 plus other municipalities throughout the state.
And, uh, I guess, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like the board to, uh, accept him as an expert in, um, engineering.
I have, I have no issues with, uh, accepting his as an expert in engineering, unless anyone else on the board has any, any other comments? Nope, and we can continue.
My next, uh, I would like, uh, Mr. Lane to describe the, the existing conditions of, uh, this particular parcel.
Can I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is the, uh, existing conditions plan that's in our set of drawings. And what this shows is the property in question. It's a 36,000 square foot lot, it's 100 foot deep, 360 feet wide, that fronts Cleveland Avenue. It was home to the, um, Friendly Care Medical Transport until it was recently torn down. The site overall, lots 31 and 32 was where that, uh, facility was housed. And lot 33 is predominantly some woods and open space. Uh, that's basically what's, uh, the existing site.
Yeah, and, and just for a purpose of the record, you're, uh, referring to what sheet in your plans?
That I believe is sheet two.
Okay, and, and these have all been submitted, so.
Correct.
So referring to sheet two, is there anything else on sheet two that's, uh, relevant?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay, let's go to the next sheet.
Okay, this is sheet three, it's the subdivision plan, and this basically shows what we're proposing out there. Same lot, we're chopping it up into seven single-family homes. They're all equal size and width, they're 51.43 feet wide, so each lot will have 5,143 square feet. They all have a 12-foot wide driveway that goes, leads out to Cleveland Avenue, uh, front walkway that leads out to Cleveland Avenue. All utilities for each one of the lots, gas, water, electric, sanitary, that's all gonna go straight out to Cleveland Avenue. All the, all the utilities are out in the road. What the, uh, the client has agreed to do is replace the sidewalk and curbing along the site frontage. And then also, after all the utilities are in place, to mill and overlay, uh, the, the pavement frontage in along Cleveland Avenue. Uh, the site also, uh, currently, we have eight street trees proposed in, down along our side of the road. We've got another, I think, seven flowering trees, one for each lot. And then, uh, along, I believe this is the, uh, Sully or Wesley line, property line, we have another 12 evergreens going in. And then across the front of the proper buildings, we have, uh, some shrubs going in, so get, enhance the aesthetics of the property.
And the shading area that you have is basically what we call the building envelope, doesn't necessarily look the actual home to get constructed there, is that right?
Correct, we just showed a, a box, a 30 by 50 box for right now.
Okay. Uh, what about, uh, the drainage?
Uh, currently, the site, uh, before it was demolished, was about 60% impervious. Um, this proposal now, with each one of these buildings combined and the driveways and sidewalks, it's at 36%. So basically, we're reducing the previous coverage, which is helping the stormwater flow, help reduce it.
And where does the water flow from presently?
It pretty much comes, uh, along the rear of the property out to Cleveland Avenue. I mean, some of it along the Sully Wesley portion, kind of traverses down along the, the, between the rear property line, but for majority of it, it goes out to Cleveland Avenue.
And taking a look at Mr. Koch's memo of June 3rd, 2021, is there any condition there that, uh, we wish to question him on? I believe, uh, number five has been answered with reference to the, uh, environmental, uh, done a phase two, we submitted that to Mr. Koch. Um, is there any other issue there that we can't comply with or a difficulty we're complying with?
No, everything, everything we can comply with.
Okay.
If we go back to your statement about item five, um, is which phase two, uh, or Bruce on, is Bruce on? Um, I, I'm not aware of a phase two study that was recently submitted, or is that something that was submitted earlier?
It was submitted earlier and then we, uh, sent it again to Mr. Koch.
Are, are you referring to the soil study that was done? A and S Consultants?
It's roughly about a, I guess, a couple hundred page document.
No, then I don't know that
There's a summary that we also sent out.
I mean, I, I have the A and S consultant, um, so subsurface soil sampling and testing report from November 5th, 2020. Um, Roger, Jennifer, is anyone?
Yes, that's what we're referring to.
Okay, so that, so you're referring to that, okay. So my understanding, um, is Bruce on this evening? I don't recall.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding and, and Alan Williams, Environmental Commission, you can chime in if you'd like also, that that is, that that was, at least to them, was not considered a phase two, um, study. And that may have been part of, I know, um, study that, you know, it may be part of the overall, um, environmental response that we need, but that based on the phase one, that it asked for, you know, significantly more to be done as part of a phase two.
That's not our understanding at all.
Well, may I speak?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Sure, absolutely.
So there are issues in this area from an environmental standpoint that have been dealt with on parcels across the street, as articulated in my letter. We don't know if this property is affected by them as well. I checked with the company that did the initial investigation. No one in the firm is an LSRP, nor do they perform phase two studies. So they limited their work to the phase one. The only other document I have received is from a soil testing company that submitted evidence of four soil borings and indicated that there were no contamination levels exceeding, uh, the DEP criteria. I don't have any, uh, demonstration that that is the number of tests required for a parcel of this size. And, and my recommendation to the board on this case, as well as all prior cases, is whenever there are any areas of concern, or however one might identify them in their particular report, uh, that they should be investigated thoroughly. And prior to this, if a vote is taken favorably on this application as part of resolution compliance, that we would require proof from an LSRP that the site is clean and safe for occupancy, for use, for residential. And that, in addition to that, the underlying potential groundwater condition with the sub-slab vapor barriers, both for radon as, as well as other issues potentially regarding groundwater, should be addressed and must be demonstrated to my office that everything is acceptable, and I would only accept that from an LSRP.
Radon as well, I thought radon typically is done by a radon testing firm.
Well, there's nothing to test until the house is up, but
I, I, I agree, so prior to the I, I, I agree. So prior to the issuance of the CO, we'd have to make a submission as to what the Pyco Curie's readings are for the various levels of the building.
What has happened in the past, and what I would suggest strongly in this case, is the sub-slab barrier be put in as a passive system. And if the testing prior to a CO comes up elevated, then it's converted to an active system, but it's designed passively with the ability to easily move it into an active system. Uh, that's really the, the only approach that I would consider, given the history in this area.
We provide that in every house.
Yeah, we can. So it's fine, and we'll provide an updated phase two.
I would just ask if the gentleman who just spoke could introduce himself and maybe be sworn in?
Uh, Ryan Josell, developer.
I will leave this to the board attorney to handle, sir.
Do you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, we, we provide a sub-slab system in every house. A sub-slab passive system. And we'll provide a letter from the LSRP.
For all the issues that were discussed?
Correct.
Okay, so then we'll move forward with that.
As long as we're on envi, you know, speaking of environmental issues, I, I have a question. Generally, maybe for Roger, you know, Bruce, or Scott. Is it common when a application has been submitted and environmental issues have been raised? Should there have been, or, you know, or this may be also for the future, not just because this application, I mean, the demolition work's already been done. Should the demolition work have gone forward, knowing that there were environmental issues that were raised? And I think that's something that, you know, we've heard, you know, from members of the public and neighbors about, and, and I think it just concerned me as well in terms of not just for this application, but just for going forward, what the proper procedure should be? If, if environmental issues have been raised in a phase one study that required phase two, should we in the future not, not allow demolition? Is that within our power to say that you, there shouldn't be any demolition or clearing work that should happen? Until that phase two study has been done and approved by, you know, by our borough engineer and seen by our environmental commission?
I, I would defer to a, a building permit could be issued. At the time, I was there. Told.
Roger, we're losing you.
If, if I may chime in. Um, our phase one recommendation was for soil samples, and neither the phase one or the soil samples came up contaminated. So we will provide that letter, but under that assumption, we, we figured that the site was clean and we were permitted to go through with the permits that we had.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not the expert on the environmental side, but just looking at the phase one, it seemed that soil sampling was one item that was recommended, but there were other. Maybe it's the same, and Bruce, you can tell me if it.
There were three items that were.
Three items. One was for ground penetrating radar survey. Another was for, and I won't pronounce it correctly, a magnetometer, you know, work to be done, and soil sampling. So one of the three was done.
All, all three were done. We did a, a ground penetrating radar. Nothing came up. There were no tanks on the property.
Did we get, was that submitted to the town as well?
Yes, it was.
I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't mean to question. I just didn't know if we saw that.
We had, we had not seen that.
Okay, so I mean, this, again, this is not just generally for, for this, for you are, you know, for you in your application, but also just for going forward. I just, we wanted to be clear, you know, with, you know, for our own town, for going forward, whether you know, we should have any procedures in place, so that if there are environmental issues raised, that it is cleared for any demolition or clearing work, you know, that's done. So again, as I said, that's something for us for going forward, but you can continue with the application.
All right. Um. I guess that takes care of Mr. Koch's report. Bill, if we could go back to LA, uh, L R K's report. I'm gonna postpone the issue about the garages because I think, well, look, Mr. Constantine's got a suggestion as to how to handle that. Talk about the parking, Bill. Bill Lane?
Yeah, we have one car garage for each unit. We have a driveway space, and then we have one on-street parking for each lot out front. So each, each house will have three parking spaces.
And we have four bedrooms per house?
Correct. Yeah, four or five, I believe is what they're proposing.
And we can therefore accommodate two and a half parking spaces required by RISA?
Yes.
You've indicated we're installing the public sidewalk. There's a suggestion here that we, if we can save a tree by wrapping around the base of the existing tree, we should do so. Do you see any difficulty with doing that?
No.
And there's some reference to a excess disturbance area of seventy-two square feet in Mr. Constantine's report. Do you see that under seven point three?
Yeah, we submitted a steep slope letter indicating, based on our review of the existing survey, topographic survey, and there's no steep slopes on site.
And reference to seven point four, which is the tree removal and replacement provisions. We're indicating that we're removing one thirty-inch caliber tree, but we're projecting that an existing fifteen-inch and twenty-two-inch we believe could be retained. But if, in the event they can't be retained, we would accordingly add the two additional replacement trees for the fifteen and the four for the twenty-two. Is that correct?
Well, this, this tree removal and replacement, the numbers don't line up with what our plan is. This might have been carried over from another project. We have trees ranging from eight to seventeen inches. So I think we're required to replace twelve trees based on that count. And that's why we're replacing it with the twelve evergreens along the southerly side of the property.
Um, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question regarding that?
Sure.
Mr. Lane, given the size of the lots, the size of the homes in your proposed grading plan, is it really realistic that these trees won't die from soil compaction above the roots in just the general construction that will take place?
Which, the trees that we're removing, or?
No, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be worried about saving trees. You're gonna cut down the ones that you're proposing to keep on this property. I think there's a very strong likelihood, if not a guarantee, that the construction in general, unless somebody puts snow fence around the drip line of the tree and nobody treads on that soil at all, they may not die this year or next year, but eventually along the way they will perish, or have a very strong likelihood of that. So I'm asking if it's realistic to retain them from your perspective, given your grading plan?
Yeah, I, I believe that all the trees that were existing on site, based on the, the, the plan that's up, is being, they're being removed.
There was just discussion about saving a couple of trees.
I, I believe the confusion is from the, the comments under seven four. Apparently, there are no fifteen and twenty-two inch caliber trees that are being maintained. If you take a look at the report or at the, the drawing that Mr. Lane has up, all trees are being removed. And they are basically on just one side of the property. The rest was basically building at blacktop.
Yes, and it didn't make sense to me that they might survive. That was why I was asking. But if they're all being taken down, that clarifies it.
Okay. Uh, let's come to seven point five landscaping. Uh, you've already testified that basically we're providing one street tree. And while you're providing one shade tree and one flowering tree for each building lot in the front, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And could you show the landscaping plan?
It puts up on the screen.
Okay. And so the circles in the front is where you're showing it. And then it looks like on the one side, there appear to be some bushes.
Yeah, these are the shade trees across the front. The smaller circles are the flowering trees. All the way to the left are the evergreen trees, and then we have shrubs and ground covers along the front of the building, front of the dwelling.
Evergreen trees on the side, for what purpose are they being installed?
That's for our tree replacement.
Okay, all right.
Have you seen a copy of the, it only came in yesterday, so I don't know if you've seen comments from the Highland Park Shade Tree Advisory Committee?
I believe, Bill, I don't know if you have any comments, but I believe they, we had chosen to install linden trees, and I believe they want a mix of that, as well as some comments regarding the mix of the flowering trees. Bill, do you have, have you seen that report?
Oh, yeah. What we could do is, you know, we can definitely, you know, change up some of the plant types, the shrub types, as they requested. You know, I, I guess the, the best suggestion for this is to work with L R K in coming up with a satisfactory landscaping plan.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think Jim's had the same general comments, although the shade tree report went into more detail. So I'm sure Jim can work with you together with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Correct. I, one question for Mr. Lane. Your replacement tree count, as you calculated, is how many trees?
Twelve.
Okay, so I'm gonna clarify that.
I think the rest of Jim's comments really refer to architecture pretty much, or planning. So at this point, I don't have any further questions. So, Mr. Lane, does any board members have any question?
I'll open up now to members of the board, if they have any questions.
I do.
Okay, Steve?
So a, a question about the landscaping. I'm, I'm seeing the landscaping towards the front and on the, the side of the leftmost lot. What, what's the, and this is an issue that we faced when the development down the hill was built towards the train tracks. What, what's the plan for landscaping on the back lot lines, which borders an existing neighborhood and other people's backyards? How, how are those folks gonna be buffered? What, what sorts of buffering will be placed?
Right, right now, the proposal is just fencing. I mean, we're trying to leave, there's about a thirty-foot deep to try to give each house, you know, a backyard. Uh, but there, there will be fencing.
Bill, I could, I could further address this. As of right now, across the backyard, it's mainly a wooded area, and you can't really see any of the houses to begin with. There's certain areas that may be open, and for each lot, that's gonna be up to the homeowner, whether they wanna put a fence there or add additional landscaping. And we'll work closely with them to make a plan that best fits their, their house. But as of right now, the entire back line is mainly wooded and off of our property.
Right. With, with all due respect, I, I, and I appreciate the desire of the new homeowner in terms of whether they want a fence or whether they want buffering, but I, I think that there needs to be some consideration given to the people who already have houses there and have lived there for many years. Um, and, and some buffering, because they already have homes there, and this is something new coming in.
And they're getting rid of something that was probably an eyesore historically, in terms of the prior use.
And I'm, I'm sure everybody appreciates that, but like I said, this is something we did down the hill when the new development went in on, off of Cleveland Avenue, down, down the hill a bit. Um, and we went through this exact same exercise, and the developer there was more than willing to put in buffering because they were concerned about being good neighbors and, and making sure that the neighbors felt that they were part of this process.
Buffering exists along the backside of the property already. There's trees across the entirety of the backside of the property.
Okay, I, I mean, we, are, is the developer willing to work with our planner and the Shade Tree Commission in terms of recommendations about an appropriate buffer?
I would just add, the Shade Tree Commission does have recommendations that there be additional planting on the rear property lines in the report that came out. So they, they do think that they need more plantings there as well.
Yeah, and while I would agree that there is some trees there, you can see through it. There are no problem. I walk past it every day.
So I think it's, I think what the Shade Tree Commission, we recommend, might help enhance the value for the developer and the livability for both existing residents and new owners, is if you added to kind of enhance that tree canopy that's at the rear, and that can be placed at the line so that you still maintain your maximum flexibility for new homeowners' rear yard areas. But they are getting the benefit of that tree canopy that comes through, the mature tree canopy along the rear of the existing home, so it's just adding to that and sort of enhancing it and growing up into it and allowing basically a succession of some new trees at the rear to reinforce what's there now, longer term.
We comply with the, the lands, with the tree replacement plan, so what, what we could do is we could take the trees from the west and move them across the backside to add to the canopy if, if you guys see that's more beneficial to the development. And we'll put a fence on the west side, if we choose.
What, what's the property to the west? Just for a quick, is that a, an existing commercial building?
Yeah, the commercial garage.
I'm sorry, if we go back, I, I, are you saying that the trees, the tree canopy, and the trees at the back of the property are on your property, or they're on the homeowner's behind you property?
They're on the homeowner's behind me property.
So you're saying there are no trees in the back of your property currently?
There, there were none before, and, and there are none now. They're all past my property line on the lots backing up to subdivision.
If you take a look at existing conditions, basically, I would say probably five of the projected housing lots were, you know, this I guess, light industrial use or warehouse use, whatever you wanna refer to it, and basically was all blacktop and building. The trees occurred on basically the two lots on the right-hand side. They're being removed. We've calculated that to be seventeen. Uh, we've placed those as evergreens along the I guess it would be considered the westerly side. All right, westerly or southerly, a southerly side of the property, but we could make it on the easterly side of the property in conjunction with the existing tree canopy that the neighbors have. And the spacing, et cetera. You know, we could work with LA, L R K on that and just put a fence to block the view of the adjacent garage, commercial garage.
Jim, does that seem acceptable to you?
Yes.
Why don't we hold that, put a pin in that for now? I suspect um, we may hear from some of the neighbors behind you. Um, you know, later on this evening, if we do, uh, we may revisit this issue. Why don't we just leave that for now and we'll move forward?
Alan? Chairman, can, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just want to let you, I, I just want to let you know that I was having some difficulties. I had to go off, and I've been listening by way of my phone, and I'm now able to talk finally. I figured that out. So I just wanted you to know, I, I believe, I, I, I apologize, Mr. Wiley, but um, I, I know that there was discussion with regard to the to Jim's report, uh, I believe. Uh, I just want to check to make sure that I, what I missed was that your, your client generally agreed to Bruce Koch's report. Am I correct about that?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for the, for the interruption. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, one question?
Sure, yes.
Uh, on the back of the lot, there is, appears to be a concrete wall. Is that going to be removed? Is that going to stay? It seems to be, sort of be a retaining wall to the next properties.
I, I can answer that. That's going to remain because it's not on our property, and, and it's on the line, and it would affect the properties behind us if it were to be removed. There's garages sitting back right next to it, and we found that there's no way to demo it without affecting the garages.
Thank you.
Jim, one, on, on your report on this one quick little typo here on page four of eight, in seven point one, your parking required section, there's a reference to South Eleventh Avenue. I, I have a feeling that was a carryover from another application?
Probably.
Just, just letting you know.
Sure. Thank you.
The last, the last line of that paragraph. Or?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments from members of the board? The testimony so far?
I have a question for the developer.
Yes.
Um, so you mentioned that you would be working closely with the home buyers um, or purchasers regarding landscaping or adding fencing. Are these properties being built to order? Or are you building all of them, and then the buyers can add finishes such as additional landscaping or fencing?
Um, they're, they're built to spec, and when they purchase the house, they can add finishes.
And the finishes include landscaping and fencing?
Correct.
Any other questions, the members of the board? None?
Uh, before going into Ryan's testimony, which will be towards about the architecture and the environmental features, uh, it might be a good time for maybe Jim to discuss his suggestion about possibly changing the front yard setback?
Um, Mr. Wiley, let me just get into that a little bit.
All right.
This was initially submitted as a uh, as a conforming application. Am I correct?
Right, correct.
And, and therefore, my assumption is that you did not give any notice with regard to anything involving property owners within two hundred feet. Is that also correct?
Correct. So, but I do have what we call the savings clause, because if the board comes in and suggests that they want a variance because they believe it's a better design, uh, my understanding, case laws, they would be permitted to do so.
Uh, yeah, so in other words, I just want to clarify that, in fact, you then did provide notice and that you included in that such other waivers, variances, and as maybe occurring as, as a result of the board application. Is that the language? So in other words, you did give notice, and that's the language you included?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Then that eliminates my concern with regard to notice if there's going to be a variance. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, Mr. Constantine, I was inviting you to uh, describe what you think would be a better design alternative, although it would require variance.
Right, actually, two variances, one for front yard setback and one for one side yard setback. And we base this by going back to the design recommendations that are in the appendix of the land use plan of the master plan adopted in two thousand nineteen, which was our, our draft form-based code, our residential design standard. It's called for, um, as Alan knows, in the two thousand three master plan as a short-term action item. Um, so when we look at those and we look at the lot sizes that are proposed here, there are really two provisions, and I laid all this out on page six. Basically, page six of the report, but I'll try to summarize and keep it simple. In order to break the boxiness of uh, the homes, we're recommending that by sliding them forward, each home forward, I think it's approximately five feet, but somewhere in that range, a little closer to the street, the garage can be pushed further back within the body of the home. To accommodate that also, we're recommending, again, looking to the recommendation for fifty-foot lots in the master plan, going from a ten-foot side yard on the left and the right to a ten on one side, eight on the other, which would allow the house as it's slid forward, and the garage pushes back to get slightly wider beyond that, and then to try to break the length of the sidewall by stepping in or out two feet, and there's a couple of ways they can do that. Um, this envelope flexibility would require seven, one for each lot, front yard variances of a couple of feet, and seven side yard variances of two feet for one side yard on each lot. And with that, I believe that if the applicant's willing to accept as a condition to work, I think there'll be more flexibility for them to basically add architectural interests, have less garage doors up closer to the street, which will basically allow for, in the sixteen-foot garage setback, which is twice what is required by our current ordinance to allow for a car parked in front of the garage doors to be behind the front portion of the house. And so that's what we've basically recommended, consistent with the master plan, which would be the basis basically for the board considering.
Jim, how, how many feet for the front yard would the variance be?
Uh, I'd like to maybe provide a little flexibility, but I would think it would be at least, at least five feet to accommodate that offset garage, but it, you know, could end up being eight or something more, so maybe it's like a five to ten. I did look, and the the townhomes across the street are, appear to be set back at twenty-five feet, so these homes would slide a little closer to the street. Um, I think effectively, uh, the street will feel a little bit more residential in character by doing that, but the real benefit is, I think we can try to get more interesting homes and break the boxiness of them by having some flexibility for the applicant to adjust the homes going down the street.
Now, since the homes are being, uh, will be built to suit, you know, by the eventual buyer, would we be giving them the option so that they can choose the original design versus, without the variances, I guess? Um, or the design we're, we're suggesting with the variances?
I, I would suggest.
Mr. Chairman, I thought I heard that they were building the um, the houses on spec and that they would that's what I thought I heard. I, I'll defer to the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Ro-Rodger's correct. They're, they're spec, and then.
Okay.
In other words, what we provided is an envelope. What Jim is suggesting is change the location of the envelope that would allow the garages to be further set back. Um, and they could provide us with some additional flexibility because of the geometry of the property.
Yeah, and we're, yeah, really suggesting that this might be an opportunity to try to work with them to get as much variety as we can between the homes, and also uh, our suggestion probably would result in the home, the rear wall moving forward a couple of feet, which means the rear yard gets bigger, which means it's further from the neighbors, separation of rear to rear, and it may also encourage some of the, the home buyers working with, again, with the applicant so that we could uh, have more rear yard area to maybe get some of that landscape beefed up, so it's trying to suggest on a conforming application that we create a, shall we say, a collaboration to try to get the best possible. I think really, it's a chance to make this feel um, not like it's sort of cookie cutter matching across the street, but really and it's an extension of the rich um, architectural character and variety that you find in the north side neighborhood. And hopefully, we can achieve that goal.
Mr. Chairman, may I uh, pose a question, please? Actually, to Mr. Constantine. Mr. Constantine, I, I hear what you're saying, but are you going to propose any adjustment to the rear setback in keeping with the adjustment to the front? Because what happens after the approval is I see this all the time. If somebody comes in, then they say, oh, look how much bigger the house we can squeeze on these lots will be. And then you're going to have what you want from the front facade, but the houses can be ten-foot larger. That affects drainage. Um, but just the massing can get bigger unless there's some constraint put on the rear yard setback to achieve what you're trying to achieve.
So I, I think we could try to make the, the rear setback increase by something that pattern is sort of commensurate with the front.
I think the building envelope could shift forward, but
Yes.
but it could not increase in size, because I'm, I'm fearful that you'll just whether this developer builds it or they sell it to someone else, and they're going to go before the construction, and as long as zoning can give a permit for it, it's going to wind up filling the entire building envelope.
We can stipulate that it'd be the same size envelope as presented in our original application. It's just the location the envelope would change if the board decides that Mr. Constantine's proposal has merit.
I think, uh, thank you, Mr. Wiley. That's a very good offer. I think Mr. Constantine should look into that, because that wouldn't prevent an addition on a house in the future without a variance, so that rear yard area would still be open. And while, uh, getting back to my report, item sixteen asks questions about creep, if you will, in terms of impervious coverage, which you said you'd agree with everything, but that comment really at some point should be revisited to explain how that will be handled when people decide they want decks and other things that um, will, will further exacerbate the impervious coverage. And that's it. Thank you.
Jim, Jim, if you could explain one other thing. I just want to understand, you had in your page six, that, that paragraph you're dealing with, in terms of the front facade, you made a reference, I, I think I understand it, and I want to know if you wanted to keep that in, that the um, garage would be approximately sixteen feet from the front facade. In other words, you'd move the, the, the front of the house up, you'd move the rear, or you'd move the garage back so that there'd be a distance from the front facade to the garage of sixteen feet. Is that what you're looking for in terms of um, architectural ambiance, or however you want to describe it?
Correct. That is, that is the standard that's laid out in the master plan draft form-based code.
Uh, Jim, could I chime in real quick? Looking at our plans, it's not a concrete sixteen-foot. We're between fourteen and sixteen for each house. Um, it's something that we discussed when, when we spoke prior to this meeting, prior to the last meeting.
I, I'd be willing to take the fourteen to the sixteen. It's, it's more than the, the, the eight feet, so.
From the, from the front of the porch.
From the front of the porch.
Yes.
Thank you. And then the, the side yard is, is one, we, you know, that you've indicated would be excuse my lack of terminology, but I call it a bit of a bump out or um, indentation, or whatever the case may be.
Correct.
On, on the side yard?
Correct, that we lay out also on page six.
Right.
Correct, and then.
That offset, that offset would be somewhere between two and three feet. Is that kind of, as you said, a minimum of two feet, so a little flexibility, two and three feet, two and four feet, what do you want?
It's a, it's a two-foot side yard variance, and the, the, what, again, what the master plan form-based code calls for is that that bump out would be a minimum of two feet, so I would kind of keep, keep that there. So basically, yep.
Just to chime in, Jim, as discussed, um, we'll take all the variances, but for the first house that we have already submitted uh, uh, outside of the subdivision, as discussed, um, we're not going to have the bump outs on that just because it's, it's, we wouldn't be able to get a permit on it prior to this hearing. And it'll, it'll just make for different houses altogether as well, different variety.
Right, so my understanding is the applicant has submitted a building permit in hopes of an approval to move forward on a first house, and they had to basically make that fit into the existing zoning requirements, so they can't add in the, the bump out and the variety and the shift in the massing.
We, we do have the fourteen feet on the garage as requested.
So Jim, how does that fit in terms of your vision and, and?
I, I think if it's one of the seven, it won't even be noticeable.
Thank you.
If, if, if the permit's been, I guess they've applied for the permit, and um, it hasn't been approved as of yet, and it appears that, you know, we still, you may not be able to, you know, you still have to get the L S R P um, done, and there may be some other conditions for approval. Um, is it really going to hold you up in terms of, I mean, will there still then be time for you to re-permit for, you know, to have the, that one house be consistent with the others?
Uh, yes, I would have the L S R P to you guys next week, but resolution for, for subdivision would, would take months, and resolution compliance could take months and really push me back.
Well, the other, if I can, Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, Ryan, you know, the idea is that you know, your, yes, compliance for the uh, subdivision would take a while. I, I understand that. But you're looking to end up, and what was presented to me was that uh, a month or so ago, or whatever it was, uh, I was asked whether or not uh, one building permit could be pulled, assuming that there were no variances, and my response was, of course, yes. Um, and it would seem to me that um, you could end up, uh, I don't know if it's, I'll defer to Jim, but he said it may not be make a difference, but you could actually change the, the um, uh, the permit to simply get that house going as part of the individual permit, but then make the modifications that are requested as part of Jim's comments. I don't think that'll delay you. Still utilize the permit, but uh, incorporate the, the comments that Mr. Constantine talked about.
Uh, that, that's what we've done, except for the side yard setback, but that's what we've done with the garage and everything.
All right. I have, I have nothing further to do right now.
If there are no other questions of uh, Mr. Lane, then I'd like to go to Mr. Goseal. He has been sworn in, but I think for the purpose of the record, he should just identify his relationship to the suburban real estate development LLC.
Uh, project manager and developer of the project for suburban development.
Okay. Um, there are two aspects that I'd like you to testify to. One is uh, the borough has uh, provisions that they would like to see loosely called green building and environmental sustainability. Could you outline for the board uh, those aspects of the uh, single-family houses that you're proposing and how they would adhere to that? Of the single family houses that you're proposing and how they would adhere to that?
Uh, yes, in all of our houses, we have the following. We have low low flush toilets. The faucets we use are Mullen faucets, water sense, they're EPA certified. No VOC paint from Sherwin-Williams. We'll have no formaldehyde in our finishes for our cabinets. We clean all the HVAC prior to occupancy. There will be no indoor combustion devices. Um, in regards to the EV, the electric vehicles, it's adaptable for EV use. So we're not going to provide it unless the homeowner comes in and says they have an EV and then we can easily put it in. Our windows are silver lined windows, our energy star and all the appliances we use are energy star as well. As as well as the light bulbs.
And then as to the. Building facade itself, could you advise a board what materials you're going to be using for the exterior?
Vinyl siding, asphalt roofing. And and precast concrete foundation.
I have no further questions to this witness.
Jim, you have any comments on the testimony that we just heard? Is there anything else from a green perspective with regard to the exterior? No, I know, I know there's been some interest in the past and, you know, trying to capture some stormwater. Possibly with rain barrels and things of that nature. It's obviously not required, but something that might be considered. My work better on the rear of the homes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So a a question about, and I appreciate the. The testimony about the the green aspects of the project, that the vinyl siding is. Did the applicant consider something along the lines of a hardy board or something like that? It it's a bit more durable and more fireproof. Is that something you guys have talked about? I I realize it it costs somewhat more, but it's actually not significantly more.
Uh, yes, we've considered it, but after running the numbers, it's not economically feasible in this price range. It is an option if someone wants to buy it, but and and.
So would you offer that as an as an option, Brian? To the buyers?
Yes, but not a standard.
It's an upgrade.
Correct.
Okay, well.
I I'm just. I'm just curious, what what is the price range you're contemplating? And I'm not asking for specific, I'm just just a range.
Uh, between 6, 650, 600 and 650,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness?
Any other members of the board? I have no questions.
No questions.
Okay.
So as my last witness, I'd just like to call Mr. Oceello.
Good evening.
If he's sworn in.
Mr. Oceello, do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do, sir.
Would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name and give us your address, please?
Justin Oceello, and that's A U C I E L L O. And the address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What licenses do you possess with the state of New Jersey?
I am a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 2008 and my license is current.
And have you provided testimony in planning to planning boards and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, absolutely. I I provided planning testimony in front of, actually in excess of above 150 boards. Locally, I I believe I provided testimony in front of the Borough Zoning Board moons ago. I've appeared in Edison on many occasions in New Brunswick. North Brunswick Franklin Township. I believe most of the municipalities in in the county.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have. This witness classified as offer as a planning expert.
I will accept that if. Comments from the board.
Yes.
Thank you.
You've been here throughout the hearing and you've heard the. Proposal of Mr. Constantine, what? Planning justifications. Or or do you believe that this would be justified under the land use development ordinance and under what circumstances?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, it's always a a pleasure as a planner to see a municipality. We know, you know, work with an applicant to develop a project or make recommendations and, you know, having an applicant. Work with the municipality as well to develop. You know, a product that's going to be, you know, better for the community at large. And I think from from the planning standpoint. I think it's clear that, you know, that that had occurred this evening. You know, certainly, you know, the benefits of of granting, there are two variances, but a. But I believe it would be for 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 six lots, so it would be six variances for for the front yard setback. And six for the the side yard setback. And I believe there was the one lot. Or the one house that's already been applied for for a the a building permit. So that wouldn't apply in this instance, but generally speaking, certainly the benefits of granting this variance or or these two variances. Do outweigh any detriments. The the C criteria or or the C two criteria, as it's known, the flexible C. It's a, you know, weighing test. There are two sides. It's it's the positive criteria and the negative criteria. The the positive criteria is a showing if any of the the special reasons in in the state's land use law. Would would be further. By the granting these variances. And I think it's clear that in this instance, there are, there are multiple. First would be criteria A, which speaks to the the general welfare and the the promotion of the the general welfare for the community. This is. You know, granting these two variances, the applicant, of course, did come in with a performing application, but in working with the board and the board's a planner. It was determined that. By i- if the boards, you know, so chooses to grant these variances, they would be, they would, you know, certainly propel. The the purposes and the goals of of the master plan, you know, certainly creating a situation that. Is more, you know, respectful of of the houses, you know, to the rear, not to say that. There was anything wrong with the the previous application, but this is a better, you know, planning alternative that that is consistent with the master plan. Certainly, I would say criteria M, which speaks to. The 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 coordination with 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 public and and private entities. I think this is a a classical. You know, you know, reason, you know, here tonight, desirable visual environment, which is a criteria I. Certainly by the granting of these variances, the board would have a product or the public or the the community would have a product. That that certainly is creating a creative, you know, layout and and character as as well. So certainly. Over in the positive criteria, there are, there are many benefits that will be be afforded to the 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 community. You know, by way of of the granting of these variances. For the negative criteria, there are two aspects. The first is that variances should not. Have a substantial detriment to the public good. I think in this instance, it's actually the opposite. I believe by 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 granting these variances, you're you're creating a situation that. You know, you're going to have a a a development that is 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 more reflective of of the aims of the master plan, as I had said. You're breaking up that 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 boxiness and there's a, you know, there's a an opportunity here. To move these homes, you know, further, further up from the the rear yard. You know, so certainly when we're looking at whether or not there are any any detriments, I certainly don't see any detriments. You know, for these two variances, cer- and and certainly if if a, you know, board member does see a detriment. In my professional opinion, they don't rise to the level of being substantial. Which is the 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 standard of proof in the first prong of the negative criteria. For the second prong of the negative criteria, it's a showing if the the granting of the variances would 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 impact in a negative way. The the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, these, this. You know, this project is is permitted, it's a a use that's that's already contemplated by the zone plan and the zoning ordinance and and certainly. You know, relative to the master plan, this this is the benefit of the master plan. This this seeks to 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 advance what, you know, with that master plan, you know, currently states. So. Certainly, again, in my opinion, no, no negative detriment to the the zone plan, the the zoning ordinance as well. In sum, this is an opportunity that the board has to in in working with the applicant and the the board professional. A the application that that I believe, you know, would be a benefit to the community.
Does any board members have any questions to this witness?
Yeah, I I have no questions. I want to thank Mr. Oceello for a very detailed analysis. I think we've been. Record that and maybe play it for some of our future applicants to show. How how excellent review of the positive and negative criteria for for variances. So we very much appreciated that.
Thank you, sir.
John, do we need that? Do we need a testimony on the front garages for Justin or no?
Yeah, well, actually, I was going to actually go through, tick off a few, a few items, Mr. Wiley, just to make sure that we're covered. Before we finish up with the witnesses, just for some of the waivers that were required as part of the application. You know, not needing a traffic study, environmental impact statement. Slopes you talked about, the front facing garage exception, I mean, just to get some, you know, we need that exception on on the record. So I just want to make sure that who will just speak to those so we can just have it on the record for those waivers and exceptions that were requested.
Well, we'll bring back Justin. What would be the rationale for not requesting a traffic study for seven homes?
No, I agree. I'm not saying I disagree. The scale doesn't require it.
I think the only issue remaining is the is the garage doors, I believe. Which I thought Mr. Constantine's suggestion was to make those. Be diminished by having setbacks on the garages. They still would be adjoining the house, but they would be set back. If this variance proposal goes through. Uh, is there any questions that you need or any?
No, and I and I think I think you had, it was stated there in Jim's report, and I think in also your documentation, the fact that, you know, our usual. You know, 50% test may not apply in this situation, given in the area of mostly offices and townhomes. And open area so that it would be very difficult to, you know, to be able to apply that 50% test in in any of that.
Right.
Yeah, that actually it does apply, Alan, so we do need to grant the waiver. The board does. No, no, I know we need to, I know we need to grant the waiver, but just saying that that was one of the reasons, you know, for applying for the exception. Okay. Mr. Wiley, do you have anything else to put?
I don't have anything else there, no.
Okay, so I'll open up for any further questions of members of the board before we'll go to the public. Alan?
A question from Mr. Josell, if I pronounced that correctly. You indicated you could you could have a letter from LSRP next week. And it's my understanding that we haven't seen any. Any ground penetrating radar work. We don't know if there are gas tanks there or not. The site with the trees on it, apparently at some point apparently had. Tin processing, which could contaminate that site, would seem that you. You don't have all the ducks in a row yet to, for an LSRP to make a conclusion.
If I could share my screen real quick, I actually have the GPR right here. Let me get that started. And they took soil samples from that wooded area as well. It wasn't just the concrete area, it was the wooded area as well.
Have that, has that been submitted to? To the board?
Yes, that's the ANS report. This is, this is the GPR. There are no tanks on the.
Jennifer, have you received this?
Jennifer's having some connection issues right now. She's working on it.
Okay.
We'll we'll resubmit it if if needed.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's still going to be a condition, you know, of our approvals. I don't know if we need right now, Alan, to go through all the details.
Oh, but that's, that's why Ryan volunteered to have this ready by next week for. The building permit issue because we have this data. We just need it to be blessed by an LSRP. Because this particular firm is not an LSRP.
Right.
Yes, at least some members of the board would like to to actually see it.
Well, we're happy to submit it as a condition of.
Okay. Anything else from members of the board?
Um, Alan, I just had one quick question. They were saying they're going to be repaving on Cleveland Avenue after, I guess, you do your tie-ins. Were you going to be going curb to curb or just to the middle of the street?
Well, why don't you answer that?
Uh, we're going to be milling the top coat to the middle of the street. If we go beyond, we'll do the full street.
Okay, because Bruce, I, you've got me if I'm wrong, but didn't we just have that repaved, that section about within the past four or five years?
We did, and with the utilities being, actually, my report says curb to curb, so. I understood that they were in agreement with all the comments in the report based on something Mr. Lane entered as testimony. And but now we're hearing something different from the applicant. My recommendation is curb to curb. You've got water line on one side. Gas on the other, sanitary in the middle, and yes, it is recently paved. Uh, we could check on what the moratorium is from the DOT and see if we wanted to enforce that, but I think. Milling and overlaying it from curb to curb along the frontage of the property is a more appropriate resolution of the matter.
That's that's my error. We'll comply.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from members of the board? No. I I just wanted to verify Alan as well, other than the items we discussed, that the applicant agreed with any of the other recommendations we have, which are relatively minor. You're saying that they did. I'm just clarifying it just like. Yeah. Okay, no, it's fine. So before we can open up to the board, do we have an issue if we don't have, Jennifer, are you back on?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Good. I've been having problems all during this, and I know that Jennifer is, I believe, I don't know that she's on now. Looks like she might be, but I know she's been texting me. So. I I don't know. I don't know the answer to the question that you've asked, but I I know that she's been having problems. She's been off and on. So.
No, it's, it wasn't a specific question. I guess the issue we have is that Jennifer is the one who would be running the public portion of the meeting. And opening up to members of the public. So we would need her to to be able to do that and communicate with us and members of the public. I think I just lost Roger.
We're dropping like flies.
Okay, so we may need to take a minute or two break while we handle some of these connection issues. Roger, are you back? He's moving, but.
I I don't know.
Okay, I just heard you now.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Is there, we can contact Jennifer to see if. I can hear you. Is there, we can contact Jennifer to see if, or how we can run.
I'm not sure what the problem, I've got an unstable connection and I'm, I'm going in and out, and I'm not sure what the problem is, but I'm trying to follow as best I can.
We have her number. We could call her.
Yeah, okay, then. Is someone calling her or do, okay?
If you'd like. Roger, we're not, we're not hearing you.
I'm sure it was very eloquent, but none of that came through.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm just having a messy time. I mean, they can't, right now, they can't hear me.
I just left. You can hear me now.
And they, they want to get information from you about a report, ANS, the death pool, come in.
Roger, could you hear me?
I can hear you, but can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. I think.
As soon as you get a better connection between Jennifer and the board.
Right.
And then I got Jennifer on the phone. She can hear you, but she can't respond or can't, is that correct, Jen? All right, she can see you apparently, but she can't hear you at all.
Okay, but can she, can she run the, the public portion of the meeting?
Can you run the public portion of the meeting, Jen? I tried.
All right, so we have to run it through you, Roger.
I can, well, they can hear, I've got you on the phone, so I'm going to relay what you are saying to them.
Okay, so, so with this.
The question, Mr. Chairman, there is no one in the public who has a hand up, so presumably no one has a question.
Well, I haven't, I guess officially, well, let me just check. So I'm officially opening the meeting up to the public.
Thank you, thank you.
And so now if any members of the public would like to ask any questions of the applicant. So please raise your hand at this point and, and let us know. And Roger, you could ask Jennifer.
Hey, there's no one from the public. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Paul Hammond. Okay, Hammond, sorry.
It's appeared on the screen his name, but he'd have to unmute himself.
Yes, Mr. Hammond, if you do that.
I did.
You do have a camera. We'd like to see you.
I'm not given the option to come up on camera.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Why don't you state your names, give us the spelling of your last name and give us your address, please.
My name is Paul Hammond, H A double M O N D, and I live at 255 Harrison Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm regularly engaged in multimillion dollar capital construction projects as part of my job. Not only have I never seen a developer approach demolition and site preparation so cavalierly, I couldn't have imagined it being possible. There was simply no effort made to provide any responsible protection or containment measures. In our projects, we would never be allowed to complete demolition without extensive demolition plans, which would include lead and asbestos testing and abatement. Nor would we ever think to move forward without one because of the obvious public health risks. And of course, we would provide responsible protection and containment measures as of matter common practice. I would like to see the demolition plans and the lead and asbestos reports, especially since the demolition debris was then inexplicably dumped directly into a crusher on site with the resulting plume of construction debris dust covering an entire neighborhood in which children live and play. I would also like to see the reports on the material that was brought in from offsite and likewise dumped into that crusher. And the mountain of potentially contaminated debris that was created is still on site. I don't know how or why we would ever believe we could operate in good faith moving forward with someone who has operated to this point with such complete and utter disregard for the people with whom they are now neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Jen, are you still there? Is there anyone else that's got his hand, got his or her hand up? No?
Before we move forward, actually, is there any response from, from the applicant?
Ryan, do you want to respond to his comments about possible lead?
Yeah, we got a permit for demolition, as we do in all other places. We proceeded as, as we would normally proceed with demolition. As we've exhibited in this meeting, and I'm going to further exhibit with the LSRP, all, all soil and material on site has been deemed clean. I'm not sure what he's talking about with offsite material, because we did not bring any offsite material. Everything that's been on site has been on site, so.
I, I think if you, if you can hear me, Ryan, I think that the concern might be not bringing material offsite, but the, the demolition debris is, I think, the thing that was of concern, and whether or not there's been any testing of that as it relates to either things like asbestos, lead, or other contaminants.
There's no asbestos in the building. It's all taken to landfills.
So there was no testing of that material?
No, before going to landfill, no, not required.
Roger, can I, can I ask a question, Roger, just procedurally, and I haven't brought this up the entire meeting? I mean, clearly, the applicant is speaking with someone who is to his right or left, depending which way you're looking, and being provided with some responses, is that, I know everything is different because we are, we are doing things on Zoom. And obviously, if it was happening in front of us, we would have seen it. Should that person be required to be sworn in? Or is it okay for the person to just be providing information, you know, in responses to the applicant?
Well, I think that your answer is yes. It certainly, it looks to me, to the extent I've been able to monitor it. It does appear as though Ryan has been getting information from some other individual, and I don't know who that is. And I think the board has a right to know that and to have that individual who has that information sworn and give testimony.
The individual's his father, Jeff Josell. Mr. Josell, Roger, if you could swear Mr. Josell in, Jeff Josell.
Okay, sir, do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God. Okay, can you give us any information? And I'm hoping you can hear me because.
First, I guess for purpose of the record, why don't we just identify his position with Suburban, the applicant?
The owner of Suburban, we've been builders, developers for 33 years in Mettuceon in Edison. And Ryan is, is young and just out of college and starting on his own venture here for Suburban. And I'm just trying to be coaching him up a little bit as he's a little nervous and not quite sure what to say all the time here. So just trying to give him my experience.
Understood. Well, now that we have you as a witness, can you answer some of the questions proposed by Mr. Hammond with regard to the material? And as I said, I couldn't be wrong, but I thought the concern was not material that necessarily brought on site, but rather material that might have been as part of the demolition of the building and testing of that in relation to contaminants such as asbestos, lead, or any other things of that nature.
So the, the majority of the building was concrete block, concrete footings, that's what was crushed on site and still remains on site. All wood debris was removed. There, there was no asbestos in the building. And we'll have that either through ANS or through the LSRP in that report that we, we will submit to you. There really was not a requirement for an LSRP report. That's why we didn't have one. But we do feel we followed the recommendations of the phase one by doing the soil samples in the phase two. We are aware of the dust problem that happened. We went around the neighborhood and spoke to the neighbors and apologized. We were unaware it was happening at the time. We had been crushing for a few days without issue. We did speak to all the adjacent property owners. Ryan went out and spoke to everyone, and we thought that was kind of cleared up. We, we are sure there's no contamination on this site. This is not a union construction job. So possibly Mr. Hammond's experience between his work and the level that residential construction works at could possibly be different. But everything is taken offsite to dumps by haulers who are regulated, and you wouldn't accept asbestos if there were any anyway. I don't know if that answers all the questions or not.
Again, I apologize for the breaking up that I'm hearing, but you're saying that the building was mostly block and that there were no asbestos was, was there, were there, was, was the building interior still intact? And if so, you know, was there sheet rock or other kinds of materials such as plumbing material? Was there, was there any type of insulation around the plumbing, things of that nature that was observed prior to the demolition by either you or your staff?
There was not, nothing different than you would find in a house. There was Owens Corning pink insulation, wood framing of walls for bathrooms and other things like that. Plumbing pipes, and in a normal course of demolition, they're just lifted straight into a dumpster and taken to one of the probably Edgerown dump. And I could provide receipts for where it was taken if needed.
So I thought the earlier testimony was that asbestos materials had been removed previously before demolition, which it was never there or it was removed previously?
I don't believe there was any there. We'd have to check the phase one, phase two. If it were there, it would have been removed before we got the favorable phase one and phase two. I don't recall, again, I'm not there on a daily basis, but I don't recall it being there, and I don't think there's any testimony from us that there was asbestos there or asbestos removed. You have a question? Go ahead, shoot.
Well, because I, I'm pretty sure I remember the testimony being that it was, was removed from the property before and taken away for disposal, which may have been a generic statement of your routine practices and perhaps not applicable to this particular property. But getting that clarified, I think, would be helpful, because if there was asbestos in the property and you purposefully had it removed before demolition, it might give some comfort, or maybe you could say, we looked for asbestos, there wasn't any, and so we did not have any removed before demolition.
The, the, the statement that was made was there was no asbestos and we removed the additional debris from the property prior to crushing.
The additional debris, meaning the non?
Wood, the pipe. Yeah, the non-cement stuff.
Thank you.
So there is no.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Go ahead. There's no linoleum nine by nine tiles, anything like that?
Concrete floors and some carpet in the office.
Thank you.
Other question?
Yeah.
So can you talk a little bit, and I realize we're already at the point where the demolitions happened already, and so that's, it's kind of dust under the bridge. But what dust mitigation efforts were taken in terms of, because you're aware now that there was a problem in terms of dust going into people's yards and there being, being a problem. Was this something that was just missed or, because it's important to us, these are our neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, and there are neighbors as well supporting us. That's why we went and spoke to every neighbor and we, we provided them with the environmental reports and we showed them what was going on. It seemed to happen, we were crushing on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. It seemed to happen on a Thursday afternoon. Whether it was the angle of the machine or the wind that picked up, by the time it was brought to our attention, it had already happened. We're on Cleveland. It wasn't blowing towards us. You didn't see it pluming up, but it did happen and it was brought to our attention. And we immediately addressed it with all the neighbors who, as far as we know, Ryan's spoken to everybody and everybody seems to be okay with it at this point. We're apologetic about it. We offered a power wash if there were any residue that didn't, you know, it rained a day later, two days later. It seems it all washed away, but it's certainly unfortunate and not something we wanted to happen. But again, Ryan went house to house to speak to every neighbor to make sure that, hey, you know, we were apologetic about it. And, you know, we did have water on site and the machine we used does have a dust mitigation system. But for whatever reason, those couple hours at the end of that Thursday just didn't go our way.
Right. I, I, I guess my, my point is, is that you obviously appreciate the discomfort or the anxiety that this caused people in the area and their concern about, well, as the project goes forward, is this going to happen again? Are there going to be other problems or, or not? And I, I guess, from my perspective, I just sort of want to impress upon you how important that is to us. And I know you, I mean, I think you're genuine when you're saying we care about this, but I, I think the neighbors are going to need to see that, that it's important.
Yeah, I mean, we, we run a good, clean job. I think Jim, Jim can attest to the work we've done in Mettuceon over the last 25 years. We, we do the best job we can possibly do, and we try to be good neighbors to everybody and create beautiful projects that by the time we're done, everybody, you know, should be happy. This was an unfortunate incident. And like I said, had we known or been brought to our attention, we would have stopped immediately and, you know, try to fix whatever is going on, which we've tried to do the next day once we found it.
Thank you.
Roger through to Jennifer. Do we have any more, any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Jen, are there any members of the public that have questions? There is a Nick, okay, there's Nikki. Can, can, can you unmute yourself, sir or madam? Nikki, okay.
Yeah, it took me a second to unmute. Yeah.
Hold on one second. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do. Nikki Kelsey, 233 Harrison Avenue. Okay. Mine is lot 52. I have 100 feet frontage or at the back of my property adjacent to the, the development. Recently, the back hole suddenly dug a big hole near my fence and the dogwood and then covered it up again. Has anybody any idea why that happened?
I, I could speak to that. Nikki, I don't know if you were the one that sent us the email. We had provided copies of the tank removal reports as well as the GPR to you. But your request, I mean, your email to us made us say, you know, let us just double check and make sure there's no tank there.
Yeah, but see, the problem was that you dug the hole in the wrong place. The tank was literally in the corner near that garage and my backyard. So we were, you know, 15, 20 feet away from where the tank would have been.
We have a full GPR scan of the property.
Yeah.
But, but we were just trying to check, just to double check, because you had sent the email, so we were just trying to say, hey, somebody might know something we don't know. So let us try and check. You know, certainly come back and dig another hole and just check again, because we want, we want it all.
If, if you've done the radar and the rest of it, that's fine. I was just curious as to why you were digging that hole there. Because I knew the tank wasn't there. I've lived in the house for 48 years and I remember the gas, you know, the gas pump being there and, and the tank. But that was many years ago, so.
Right, right. But again, we, we, I think we sent you copies of the permits. The tanks were.
Yes, no, I, I received everything. I appreciated that.
It was just to double check, because hey, if a neighbor says something, we just want to make sure. That's all we were trying to do. You know, when we get back out there, we'll probably dig another hole just to triple check.
No, you don't need to dig any more holes. If you've done the testing, that's fine.
Yeah, we tried, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And are there any other hands up for testimony? Let's go to Mr. Rudy first. Mr. Rudy?
That's Mrs. Rudy.
So do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do. Sasha Rudy, 247 Cleveland Avenue. I live not directly across the street from it, but across from the garage next to it. I believe it's like a music rental garage or whatever. Anyway, I just found out like they maybe had asbestos. Anyway, I just found out like they maybe had asbestos or something. I walk by that to go to the grocery store. I've been touting, you know, walkability in the town and now it turns out that it might damage me years in the future and I won't know. So what is going to be done in the future to prevent this? There's no way to like take it back. So what's, what's to trust them now?
Well, we've represented that there's no asbestos on the property. And we can submit the year to phase one, which would identify whether or not they thought there was asbestos in the building. That that'll give you a level of comfort.
I, I don't know if there's a level of comfort that can help, you know? That's, that's all.
Right. What I, what I can say for the future is, it is something that, you know, I've asked and we will follow up on is, you know, to make sure that if there, there is a, you know, potential issue raised, you know, environmental issue raised, that that is fully taken into account before, you know, future demolition or clearing work is done on, on a piece of property. And that we make sure that we've seen, you know, all the studies, you know.
Actually, also, he never notified me about any of it. So I just appeared, you know, one day and there was like, looked outside and there was demolition. No notice of cloud or anything like that. No one talked to me and I am less than 200 feet away probably.
That is not a requirement of the building permit. Mayor Council wants to adopt some other procedures for the building permit, that's probably you know, what should be contemplated because generally speaking, the board doesn't get involved in demolition permits. It gets involved in land use applications, but you might want to make a recommendation to the mayor council going forward that they may want to have some other checkpoints for demolition.
Right. And that is something that, that I mentioned. I don't know if Ms. Rudy is still, still on the line.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Are, are you an owner of property within?
Yes, I own 247 Cleveland Avenue.
Okay, I was just checking why you would not have gotten notice.
Well, this is notice, I believe.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I was just talking about the application, not, not demolition.
Okay.
That's all.
Ms. Ms. Rudy, did you get notice of the application itself?
No, that's why I've been checking the permit, board meetings and whatnot. Just curiosity.
Well, I, I will tell you that under the law, the applicant is required to get a, a, a list of property owners within 20 feet from the tax assessor. They have the right to rely upon that. I'm assuming that Mr. Mr. Wiley or his office made the appropriate notice in accordance with that, with that property list. And if your name was on it, you should have gotten it. If your name was not on it, then presumably you would not be entitled to that, even though it may seem as though you're close. It depends upon whatever the tax list says.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was your, what was your address again?
247 Cleveland Avenue. It's under Caleb Cribbishing.
Okay. All right, that's something we'll look into.
Thank you.
Kim, is, is Mr. Hammond still? Okay, Mr. Hammond, you, okay, Mr. Hammond, you were previously sworn, but just for the record, just state your name again, please. Mr. Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Hammond, you need to, there we go.
I, I did. I didn't catch Ryan's dad's name. I apologize. Jeff, sorry. I don't know if this is for Jeff or Mr. Wiley. But I just want to confirm, was, was testing done? Is it reported for lead and asbestos and, and have those reports been submitted?
Yes, it, it's covered in the phase one that we did. And then there were recommendations in the phase one that we followed. And those were all submitted and one of those also was the GPR and everything was submitted. I don't know why. It doesn't seem to be. I know we submitted it also to the engineer at a later date because they said they didn't have it. But we're happy to resubmit it along with, we're gonna have the LSRP review everything and then write a letter stating his findings because that is what the board is asking for. We don't think that was a requirement other than to do our regular environmental, but we have no problem having the LSRP review everything and submit his letter of approval as well. So yes, everything was tested for. Anything that was of any concern was further tested for and everything that had to be removed and taken to the place it needed to be taken to was taken where it was supposed to go.
And, and since all that debris is still on site, would you test the, the, that debris slag?
We can test it. Sure. I mean, I, I don't think it's required. Again, we're gonna use it for driveways and everything else, but we can test it.
Thank you.
Just to.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Patrick.
Just a clarification on page 13 of the consultant's report. Item 6.3.1 hazardous substances. It simply states a walkthrough of the subject property revealed no evidence of hazardous waste. My assumption on that, again, having been in the business myself, is that they would have walked through and probably identified, let's say if they saw nine by nines, they saw certain insulation around piping, they saw this or that, they would have then went to test. But whether they, you know, took samples, you know, underneath or the soil that the concrete was attached to, that probably didn't happen. But, you know. That's all it says in the phase one site assessment.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add one more thing, I just looked at the first sheet of the, of the, of the plan. As I think that Mr. Wiley did, and at least according to the list of the property owners within 200 feet, Ms. Rudy is not listed as a 200 foot property owner.
No, and I, I didn't, I didn't see that address on mine either. So that's why I said we will need need to check maybe just why that, why that happened.
It's, it's the tax assessor's responsibility to give the list and, and then Mr. Wiley and his client have the right to rely upon that.
Right, because there, there are addresses lower than that number and, and well, I guess on Cleveland, yeah, then there are address numbers that are higher than hers on Cleveland. So.
No, I, I don't have any answer for you.
I, I, I know, I know there's no answer. So that's just something we can, we can send, send a note over to the tax assessor's office and, and, and see what their response is.
Ken, are there any further members of the public that are interested in speaking? The answer was no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so at this time I will close the public portion of the application. Mr. Wiley, do you have anything else to present or you are?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I will open up, meaning back to members of the board, if there is anything other specific items you'd like to raise or discuss before we move into a more detailed discussion and, and to vote on the application. I do not see any.
I'll just speak up.
What's that?
No, no, I have my hand up, but it is the lack of Jennifer's being able to hear the meeting affecting our ability to record it. This is more procedural than anything else. I mean, are we?
Well, she, she, Jennifer, can you hear what people are saying through my phone? She can hear.
Okay, I, I, that was my only thing. I didn't want to do something that would later might be challenged because it wasn't recorded or something like that.
And the good, the good news, the good news is that she can hear it. Even if she couldn't for some reason, I know that there is a recording that takes place so she could end up listening to the recording. And we would still be in compliance with all of the requirements of the municipal Angeles law.
And assuming we trust it, the little red ball that says recording in the top corner.
Okay, I just, other than that, I, I have no questions at this time.
Okay. All right. So if we have more questions or any further, Roger, how would you like to attack?
I'd love to be able to do what I normally do, which is to say that I have a series of conditions based upon the testimony, but given the fact that I probably only heard about 50% of the testimony, what I'm going to be recommending and certainly members feel free to supplement, but I'm going to be recommending that the two variances be incorporated into any approval. If there is an approval, that they include the front yard variance, that it would be a moving the, the front yard up about five feet. And that there'd be a distance between the front porch and the garage of between 14 and 16 feet. And that the building envelope, oh, sorry, and the side yard would also be modified in accordance with Mr. Constantine's report and that the building envelope would just simply move up so that there's no enlargement of the building envelope. I would also recommend that the comments that were made and which unfortunately I did not hear, but generally speaking, the comments that were made in both Mr. Koch's report as well as Jim Constantine's report be incorporated. And I believe that there were some of them, particularly with regard to Mr. Constantine's report in terms of the applicant being willing to work with the engineer and planner to work out some of the issues as it related to what I understood. I think I understood with regard to some buffering in between this property and other properties. So that is what is generally my understanding concerning the, what I, what I thought was the testimony. And I would also note that in light of the comment made by, by a member of the public and the response by Mr. Jeff, that in fact, they will agree to test the, the, the remaining debris on site to assure that there's no contaminants located on the site at the present time. So those are the ones that I could gather based upon my unstable connection. If there's others, I'm happy to add them as appropriate.
Steve?
So this is probably captured within Roger's building envelope point, but what I would make clear is that with the reduction in the front setback, there's an expansion of the rear setback. In other words, we're sliding forward. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on that point?
Sure.
So I, I would ask Mr. Thomas and Mr. Constantine how they would have that memorialized other than the resolution because in the future, the surveyor won't pick up on this. Somebody comes in with a building permit request and his only officer looks at it and has no idea that we've applied that constraint to these six or seven lots.
The way I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bruce. The way I would want it is, is to indicate that the variance is granted. And in order to accomplish that, the maps will have to be modified to show that alternative building envelope in accordance with what the board has approved.
And could it be incorporated in the Ds as well? I know the map will be filed, but eventually Ds would have to be prepared for transfer of title. And that's probably the best chance the borough has. I think the chance of somebody looking up the filed map will be limited. And a legal survey doesn't have a requirement to show the setback line. So. And then Mr. Constantine, how will this affect decks and other things? Because then the whole backyard could become a deck within the impervious coverage that's allowed. Not the whole, but a considerably larger area could.
Hey, I'll defer to Roger's expertise on this, but I think a survey does pick up setback lines as long as it's shown on the filed map with the township. I don't think rear yard setbacks are generally incorporated into Ds, even the legal descriptions of Ds, which are limited to, you know, latitude and longitude notations, but I do think they show up in legal surveys.
Also, you know, zoning regulations have building lot coverage as well as impervious coverage. Pervious coverage usually affects decks and those kinds of things. So there are limitations already built in to the code. So somebody would have to come in for a bulk variance.
So I'm not disagreeing with your concern. I just, I, I am under the impression that a survey would pick it up as long as it's reflected in the filed map with the town.
I don't, I, I don't think that's the case in my experience. The offsets, the setback to the nearest property line to setback to the front yard setback is shown on a survey, but the rear yards, the setback lines generally are not.
Well, look, I, you know, I, I think that there can be language included in the deed to reflect the fact that there is a, a building envelope that will be, and I don't have, I'm not gonna open up my map right now, but the building envelope will be shifted in a manner as indicated in the variance and that the building envelope will not be expanded in, in regard to that variance, that it will be continued to be the same building envelope that was shown on the plan. Just shifted further up.
That's a good idea to have a reference to the resolution that gets passed, which will include the variance. And that language in the deed will force people to look back when they're doing title searches for those restrictions. I would also just make the comment, as, as long as I have the mic, about incorporating the recommendations on the plantings from the Shade Tree Commission. I know we touched on it very briefly in the beginning, but I think the variations in planting standards was okay with the applicant and I know very important to the Shade Tree Commission.
And we have no problem.
Had agreed to that.
But Mr. Constantine has the task of getting my client as the applicant and the Shade Tree Commission on the same page. Which he's usually very good at. But I don't think he's had that many opportunities to work with your Shade Tree Commission yet. That's, yeah. Like I said, they had lots of suggestions. You know, tree species are certainly not a problem. But you know, there's probably some massaging of that memo that probably needs to be done. And we can, if you're willing to rely on Jim doing that and working with the commission, that we can work with Jim.
We, we would intend to run all of the recommendations by the Shade Tree Commission, get their further input and blessing. Anyone else from the board? I'll just run Roger through a few things I had jotted down. I think based on on our support from our professionals, they have no issues with granting waivers with regard to traffic impact analysis, environmental impact statement. There was testimony that there was no slopes of greater than 10% disturbed. We will grant the front facing garage waiver and a waiver for, and provided a 50 to 100 foot subdivision sketch plat instead of the required 200 feet. I think within, within Bruce's memo and they, applicant had agreed curb to curb repaving as well as the placement of the sidewalk. Also the provision for the, on the environmental side of providing the LSRP letter and a subs lab passive system. Anything else that we we discussed? Thank you, Rebecca. I had it jotted down in my notes with a quotation mark, no asbestos in the building. So someone must have said that at some point. I've had that in quotes. I think I think, and we've heard the testimony regarding, from the owner regarding green building and what their plans were for exterior vinyl siding, but would, would provide as an upgraded option for hardy board.
Right, that's a good point. Thank you. I forgot that.
I'm sure you didn't forget. I'm sure you just were, you couldn't hear at that point.
Thank you, Alan.
I think that, I think that covers it. And I guess I would, oh, so I think that's it. And I think we're ready to, to vote. Someone wants to make a motion to approve based on the conditions.
All of the above.
All of the above. Okay.
Okay, what, I, I, I didn't hear a second, but that's because my, who, who did the second? Alan did the?
You can do the two ones if you want.
Alan did the motion and Steve did the second. Jen, if you could do the roll call, hopefully everybody can hear this. Go ahead, Jen. Yes.
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 Okay, the, obviously the motion passes. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
And
Thank you.
And Ryan, Giselle, welcome to Highland Park. We look forward, we know we had a few hiccups along the way, but we look- And Ryan, Giselle, welcome to Highland Park. We look forward, we know we had a few hiccups along the way, but we look forward to everything working out on your development and with your neighbors and to Jeff also, great job on developing your son as well. So.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night.
Hopefully we can get through the, the other item that we deferred. Prepare that we did the other consistency review and that's with regard to the stormwater management ordinance resolution.
Okay, I need to find. Where does Kim get to come back and do those?
I think Kim's.
I know, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I just need to to pull up my stuff online here. Bear with me for a moment. Roger, if you want to start while I'm pulling it up, that's fine.
The resolution was submitted and I've got papers all over the place because I was settling with the computer. But the, it was, it was a ordinance that was mandated by the state of New Jersey and as explained by Bruce in regard to stormwater management, he indicated that that essentially this is, this is a format that was followed by the borough in, in regard to the ordinance. And I believe that Mr. Koch indicated that the, the matter had been introduced and it was state mandated. It attracts the ordinance and that the township did take advantage of one item with regard to flexibility within the statute that had to do with the definition of major development. The ordinance also provides a conservative approach for the definition of major development, which benefits the borough and the borough residents. So that's what you incorporated and that's what Bruce indicated. And it does appear as though, and what you found was that it was, it was not inconsistent with the master plan. And that's what the resolution reflects.
Does anyone have any, any comments, questions or changes to the resolution as provided?
For the record, I have not received any.
Okay, I am okay with the, with it. I will make a motion to approve the resolution as, as provided.
And that was Alan Kruger?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and who did the second? Patrick, Patrick did the second. And now when you get to it, Jen, the roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Miss Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Do we have any other action or other business for this evening?
Mr. Chairman, you, you do have other things, but in light of the hour, I would, I mean, if I, if it was Kim, I think what she would be saying is the other items and reports might be better served to be carried to the next meeting. That's what I think she would be saying.
I, but, but Kim's not here. So, you know, I could, I could say what I want, but, and I was, I was gonna say, I don't think anyone has anything. And unless there's any important pressing zoning, building officer reports or rehabilitation screening reports, speak now. If not, we will move on to. All right. Did any other public comment for, for this meeting?
It would be on matters not on the agenda.
Not related to what the items already that we've already addressed. And if not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
And, yep, okay, we're, we're good. She sees no one in the public. That's good. That was Patrick.
Second.
By Steve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right.
Bye, thank you.